Okay, we'll call the May 4th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting into session. The first issue is the roll call.
Chair Clow.
Here.
Vice Chair Lawrence.
Yeah.
Secretary Smith. Commissioner Faulkner. Commissioner Lucero.
Here.
Commissioner Morondo.
Here.
He's on Zoom. Commissioner Pava.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And Commissioner Lawrence, will you lead the Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, next we'll move to the approval of the agenda. Staff, do you have any changes to the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we have one change. We'd like to move case item number seven in front of item number six. The variance needs to be approved first prior to the development plan.
Do any members of the commission have any changes to the agenda? If not, then we'll do a roll call.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Is he on or is he muted?
Commissioner Morondo, if you can unmute yourself and...
I, uh, can you hear me?
Uh, approval of the agenda?
Can you hear me? Hello? Uh-oh.
Commissioner Pava. The motion has been approved.
Next, we're moving to the approval of the minutes of the April 6, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Any changes from staff?
Chair, no changes.
Any changes from commissioners? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava.
Yes.
Motion has been approved.
And next, Staff Communications. We have a presentation on bicycling and pedestrian advice from the Advisory Committee Strategic Plan. Yolanda Eisenstein.
Yes, hi, thank you. I'm Yolanda Eisenstein. I live in Santa Fe and I am on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee Act for short. We're a group of advocates and volunteers that are focused on making Santa Fe a bike and pedestrian-friendly city. And I'm going to introduce you a little bit to our group and talk a little bit about our strategic plan and why we have a strategic plan. So as a committee, we have a resolution that was passed in 2003. So we actually have details in terms of what our purpose is and why we're here. In 2021, we decided to change from the Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee to pedestrian because more of our work was focused on pedestrians and walkers than hikers. So we got a new resolution passed and that was in 2021. So our purpose is to provide input and advice that supports the ongoing development and maintenance of a transportation infrastructure that makes bicycling and walking in the city safe, equitable, viable, and comfortable modes of transportation, commuting, and recreation. So our committee is not just about exercise. It's about commuting. We want more people to take their bikes shopping, to walk to places. We want more than just to be an exercise or recreation city. And one of the things that we do is, as a committee, we do research, not only on what's happening in our own city, but we also do research in other cities. When we changed the, drafted the e-bike regulation, we looked at cities in Colorado and other parts of the state. So not only are we focused on what's happening here, we're looking to other cities to help us, guide us in terms of what we do and how we move forward. So we advise Public Works on policies and programs. And we do everything from talking about, do we have enough bike racks in the city for people who ride into the city? Do we have sensors at red lights? Because a lot of times, if you have a bicycle at a red light, there's no sensor that detects that bike. So the bike is sitting there and the bike doesn't know when to leave, to cross the road. So you get bicycles that may cross the road on red lights. And so these are safety things and issues that we look at. We look at bikes on sidewalks. Should they be riding on sidewalks? How fast should they be riding? So these are some of the issues that we look at. So this is the committee. And Counselor Michael Garcia is the Chair of our committee. And Romella is our staff liaison. And we have representatives from every district. That way, we have a voice, not only with every district, but also from the county. We can serve three two-year terms, so we do roll over eventually. We have subcommittees. One of the things that we decided as a committee is that we could focus more narrowly on specific issues, whether it's a city ordinance, or whether there's some sort of media relations, or we want to go to bike races to divide into different committees, subcommittees. So I head up the Policy Planning and Law Committee. I'm a lawyer, so that sort of was natural for me. We have Promotion and Education, and then we have Technical Review, which is really the hard work of looking at every plan that comes across the city's desk in terms of infrastructure plans. We look at them sometimes before they ever come into existence. We suggest them sometimes. We looked at them at the 30% point. Basically, we look at these plans with an eye to bicycle friendliness and pedestrian-friendly. Couple of years ago, we did some kind of an informal survey. And to a certain extent, it just confirmed what we already know about biking and walking in the city. We got most of our responses from District 1 and District 2. And this may look a little complicated, but the upshot is most people use bicycles in the city for exercise and entertainment. We don't have enough people commuting. We don't have enough people going to shopping, to the store. We don't have kids walking and cycling to school. So we really want to improve that and make Santa Fe more of a bicycle-friendly city. And there are basically two reasons that we aren't as friendly in biking and walking. It's safety and it's also connectivity. It's hard to get anywhere from a certain point. I live off of Bishop's Lodge Road. If I could ride my bike down Bishop's Lodge Road and feel safe doing that, then I could go to a lot of places downtown. But I'm not going to bike down Bishop's Lodge. It's not safe. So one of the goals and one of the main focuses that we have is connectivity. How do we improve the city's infrastructure so that people can get from point A to point B and feel safe? Again, when we ask people what needs to happen, it all pointed to safety and connectivity. So after we did the survey, we decided that we wanted to do a strategic plan and we wanted to have a vision. We roll over. Our terms aren't long-lasting. But by having a strategic plan and by having a vision, when I roll off the committee, this plan, this vision is still there for the next person to pick up. So we don't have this sort of fragmented committee that you get new people on the committee and they don't know where we're going and they don't know what our vision is or where we're headed. So that's why we put together this strategic plan and why we have a vision. It will continue when we have new council people, when we have new committee members. And so with that, our vision for 2050 was to be a diamond-level bike-friendly community. The League of American Bicyclists has these categories and these levels that you can reach that reflect how friendly you are as a city to bikers. Right now, we are at the silver level. So we're doing pretty well. So the next level would be goals. And ultimately, we would like to be at the diamond level. For example, Colorado Springs is one of the cities that has achieved that level of being bike-friendly. We want to improve the number of Santa Feans that are commuting by bike. We want more bicycle lanes and we want fewer fatalities. So that's 2050. So in the interim, on our strategic plan, we did a 10-year. So by 2033, this is the progress that we would like to make. We would like to reach goal-level status. We would like to increase ridership. And we would like to increase the number of streets that have bike lanes. So we have an interim goal that we can work towards. So there's a lot of data on this slide and I'm not going to go through it all. But basically, what that's telling you is when we did our strategic plan, we looked at a lot of data. We looked at what the potential funding was. We looked at what our current situation was. We looked at the economy. We looked at recessions. We looked at climate change. We looked at a lot of different impacts that would impact the city in what we're doing and what our goals are. We did your basic strengths and weaknesses analysis. And basically, the upshot is we need to integrate land use and transportation planning to have a bike and pedestrian-friendly community. One of the things we have to do is we have to change our culture. Santa Fe, even as a small city, is still car-focused. So one of the things our committee wants to do is everything that we look at, every plan we look at, every program, we want to look at it from a pedestrian and bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly culture. And it's going to take a while. I mean, we're just one committee, but it's something that we're focused on. And if we're focused on it, hopefully, we can convince other people to be focused on it and sort of shift our thinking from cars to other transportation. So we put together just a few specific action items in our strategic plan. So we want to formulate some policies and programs that make the distances less intimidating and more friendly. And it's not just about infrastructure. It's also about psychological issues. It's also about how you think about transportation and going. You automatically go to your car? Or can we make this a city where you think about hopping on your bike? Or you think about walking somewhere? So we have three projects that are currently under, in the works. We want to work with land use on the code rewrite. Anytime you have a new project, it's always important to get different voices. And so we want to be a voice. And then on task two, we accomplished this recently. We amended the city's unified traffic ordinances to include e-bike regulations. And this was very important. New Mexico has a law now, but it was the last state. I think there were only two other states, maybe Mississippi and another state, that did not have an e-bike law. So we decided to go ahead and move forward with the city of Santa Fe. We have an ordinance on the books. It's going to change. E-bikes are going to change, where you can ride them, how fast they go. But by having an ordinance on the books, we have something to work with. And it also works with the law that just got passed. So we did a lot of research and we feel very comfortable that we have a very good ordinance and we can build on that going forward. And then the third task is to assess connectivity. Then our action item two is to assist Public Works and Land Use in ensuring that the design and construction of city streets have bicycle and pedestrian facilities. And we're looking at safety. And we have certain safety issues. We have bike lanes. We have share-a-lanes, which are the painted, the, on the road that shows the bicycle. But a lot of people don't even know what that is. And we don't want to put more signs up. A lot of people get used to seeing it. They don't even read it. So we have to look at ways to make the city friendlier without cluttering the streets and cluttering the roads with signs.
Test.
And then another thing that we just recently started talking about is how can we educate the public? We want people to know about the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. We have some people who will come to ask and ask questions, or they'll come to our meetings. But we want to continue with that. We would like for the press to talk about our e-bike regulation. So, you know, we've kind of started an outreach on that to see if we can actually talk to people and get some publications and get some coverage of the ordinance that we have that nobody else has in any other city in New Mexico. We're the only ones that were progressive enough to see that e-bikes were important and they weren't going to go away. So we put together an ordinance. So with that, I will close and just say thank you for having me. And I hope that I gave you a little piece of what BPAC does. We are very, we're a very dedicated group. We're very much interested in the city and we want to make the Santa Fe bike-friendly and a place that people enjoy recreation as well as commuting. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you for the presentation. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner Lucero.
Thank you, Chair. This is near and dear to my heart. I'm a cyclist, former member of BPAC, so hello. I just want to say that this, this work is, is very much needed. And I would like to just ask you, what sort of collaboration efforts are being made to work with other entities that do this kind of similar work? I know Bike Santa Fe is an entity that's getting a relaunch right now. And Santa Fe Conservation Trust.
Right.
They're also kind of heavily invested in this.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to, if you could just kind of let us know what sort of communication you, you have with these other organizations and...
Well, we work closely with the NPO. We, we are very much aligned with some of their philosophies and work that they do. And, you know, Santa Fe Conservation Trust, they have the Safe Routes to School Program. We have volunteers that, you know, volunteer to go with Tim to walk to school with children. And we certainly did a lot of, when we were doing the e-bike regulation, we did a lot of outreach to other biking organizations, not only in, in New Mexico, but in other states and cities to see what they were doing and how we could craft the best ordinance that we could. So a lot of it depends on, you know, what project we're working on or what we have that's top of mind. Right now, we want to look at the traffic calming program. It was last updated 10 years ago. And so I think it's time for us to look at it. So we have the subcommittee and we're starting to look at how we can change that so it's an easier process for people to go through, that we're focused on safety and that we make it easy for people to ask for traffic calming in their neighborhood. And what's happening now, a lot of it is the reports that we're looking at are about speeding. So, you know, we probably need to talk to law enforcement about that and meet with them and find out, you know, what are some of the issues that we need to address? So, so it'll be driven by whatever project we have going at the time.
One more question. I'm just curious, and that wasn't really a part of this part when I was a part of BPAC, but as developments, you know, get proposed, are you all kind of keeping track of that? And are you, whenever a red flag comes up, what sort of action do you take or what sort of initiative?
Well, just to give you an example of what happened recently, we met, we have Technical Review Committee, which really looks at some of the technical issues. But we recently had a meeting to talk about Bishop's Lodge, which there's going to be some reconstruction there. And so the, what we bring to the table is a biker's perspective. And so we talked about bike lanes and how wide they should be, what happens with roundabouts, what happens with intersections. So we bring a perspective that might not ordinarily be brought. And so the engineers and the planners can take what we have asked or what we've brought up. And sometimes they go, oh, yeah, we didn't even think about that. So I think sometimes it's just a matter of, you know, if you have a certain perspective, bringing it, if you're not a biker, maybe you don't think about certain things, or you're not a walker, you don't think about certain things. So I think that's an example of going into a project before it gets to 30%. And then they take our input. And then we have a 30% point where they'll come back to us and say, okay, we did this because, you know, of what you said. We didn't do this and this is why. And so we have some input all along the way. So at the end, we feel like we have a project that we've had a voice in and that is a win-win for everybody.
How does one get involved in something, in BPAC? Even, and maybe they don't have the time for the meetings, but even just pass...
All the subcommittees, it's a great way to get involved because we have three subcommittees. You don't have to be from a certain district. You know, we're, we're pretty programmed in terms of how, what districts you can come from. But that doesn't matter on the subcommittees. Like if someone wants to be on Planning Policy and the Law Subcommittee, they can volunteer. And basically, they would be involved in the things that I'm working on, or if they wanted to be on Technical Review. So that's one way to get involved without having to commit at the level that, that we're at.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to approval of findings and conclusions. I'm going to combine the different projects. So the first one is case number 2022-6201 and 2022-6602. It's Windmill Hill at Las Pascidas Compound Preliminary Subdivision Platte and Windmill Hill at Las Pascidas Compound Variance. Any changes from staff to the findings and conclusions? Any changes from any commissioners?
I have a point of order for possibly, City Attorney. I was not present at the hearing where these findings and conclusions are put forth. And so my question is, do I vote or not vote on these?
Chair Clow, Commissioner Pava, if you were not there and did not review the, the video, then I would say abstain.
Yeah, so I wasn't there.
Right, so you would not vote on them?
Yeah.
Unless you watched the video and read the materials.
Yeah, and so do we have an adequate number of people with my recusing? Okay.
Yeah, we do.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
All right. Yeah, Chair Clow, sorry. Looks like we're still having some problems with his microphone.
Can he chat whether he votes in affirmative?
Yeah. Commissioner Morondo, we still can't hear you. I know from my texts that you can hear us. Could you just vote in the chat? There's no chat, okay. Can you just, if, if you vote yes, raise your hand?
It's up to the attorney to say.
Okay, I'm, yeah.
Yeah, if you can, if you would like to vote yes, currently raise your hand. I'm not seeing any hand.
Oh, he, well, he was just there. Oh, he...
Oh, he did raise, okay. Oh, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Pava, you're abstaining? Recuse, okay, and then Commissioner, I mean, Chair Clow, you would need to vote.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion has been approved.
Okay, the next one is case number 2022-6102 Villas de los Saleros, Unit 3, Preliminary Development Plan. And case number 2022-6103 Villas de los Saleros, Unit 3, Preliminary Subdivision Platte. Any changes from staff?
Chair Clow, we do not have the findings for 2022-6103 prepared yet, so do not vote on that one.
Okay. So we are just handling matter 2022-6102. Any changes from staff?
No changes.
Any changes from commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava. And Chair Clow.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion has been approved.
And the findings on the next matter, the 2022-6103, they'll be, we'll deal with them next time?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, the next case is matter 2023-6258, the Cluster Housing at Monte Serrano Development Plan. And case number 2023-6260 Monte Serrano Variance to subsections 14-8.2 D1 and D2B. Any changes from staff? Any changes from commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Lawrence. Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Lucero.
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo.
Yes.
Commissioner Pava. Chair Clow.
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
There's no old business, so we'll now move to new business. The Chapter 14 Text Amendment, I understand pursuant to the amended agenda, has been withdrawn. And case number 2023-6392 and 2023-6491 has been postponed to June 1. We will now hear case number 2022-6134, 1864 Paseo de Vista Rezoning. And 2023-6488, 1864 Paseo de Vista Master Plan. Mr. Escuval.
Madam Chair, members of the commission. So the first case is case 2022-6134, Paseo de Vista's rezoning. Jenkins Gavin, Inc., agent for Sierra del Norte Partners LLC. Applicant, they request a rezoning from R1 to R3. The property is approximately 31 acres located 1864 Paseo de Vista, zoned R1 and within the following overlay districts, the Urban Archaeological Review District, River and Trails Archaeological Review District, and the Escarpment Overlay District. It's also located within the mountainous and difficult terrain mapped area. The second case is case 2023-6488, 1864 Paseo de Vista Master Plan. Again, Jenkins Gavin, agent for Sierra del Norte Partners LLC. Applicant requests master plan approval for a future residential project on the 31 acres. The property is approximately 31 acres and zoned R1 and located within the same overlay districts. I think what we'll do to kick off today's presentation is to begin with what I call the Road of Review. This is what every application runs through when they come into our office from start to finish. I don't think anybody's ever made that presentation to the Planning Commission so that you know the review process that every application goes through. I think it's important to understand that so that you know that the case manager is nothing more than the tip of the iceberg, where that iceberg is a larger body of, of members who look at an application. So the first, the first item is the Pre-Application Conference, which is pursuant to 1431E. At the Pre-Application Conference, it's required for the applicant to attend the meeting. And the applicant attends, attended this meeting on November 26, 2022. The pre-op meeting is typically attended by several members of the Development Review Committee. This meeting allows the city to determine the type of application, the application, the applicant needs, both to submit and for processing. The applicant can also ask questions of the attending DRT members, or they can give them feedback so that they can build their application appropriately so that that particular division has something to review. Next would be the early neighborhood notification meeting pursuant to fourteen three one. The applicant conducted their E N N on November seventh, twenty twenty-two, and then again on February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. And on my memo, there's an error because I only put one on there, and I think I even got the date wrong. But these are the correct dates, the E N Ns were were conducted. The first E N N was done for a general plan amendment and rezoning. They eventually dropped the general plan amendment. They came in with a master plan and they conducted a second E N N or a rezoning and a master. And the E N N is a meeting where the applicant and the interested members of the community can get together and be introduced to the project before it gets submitted to the the city for review. The E N N is crucial because what they submit and what they represent at the E N N is what they are allowed to apply for. If they miss something at the E N N, they are not allowed to apply for it. They start at square one, go back to the E N N. The next step is the application. The applicant submitted their application, which is the rezoning and the master plan on March thirteenth. That application gets logged into our system and then goes to the case planner. The case planner then prepares that application, looks at the application to review it before the development review team. The development review team is made up of about fifteen members of both divisions, departments, professionals, and engineers alike. In this particular application, all those highlighted circles in white are all the members of the of the DRT that reviewed this application. Those circles that are highlighted in yellow are going to be those development review team members that will be added to the list or the preliminary plat and final plat review. So there'll be a total of fifteen development review team members that will be looking at the preliminary plat. Only thirteen looked at the rezoning and the master plan. From there, we go to additional information. The DRT, after receiving the application from the staff or from the case manager, will look at their own criteria and the information presented by the applicant. If additional information is required, that DRT member, water, sewer, traffic, will ask for additional material or ask for clarification to material that they've already submitted. So if they're missing something, this is an opportunity to complete the application as long as it's not something that they completely missed entirely, making it an incomplete application. But it's something to subsidize the application so that that team member can actually review the application in accordance to the chapters, the city code that they that they have to review by for their particular philosophy or review. From there, the applicant starts to set the the project up to be heard before the public body, which means they got to give public notice. In this case, the public notice is a poster. It gets put on the agenda by the city and they will email any neighborhood associations that are registered with the city. And they will send out mailings to everybody within a three hundred foot radius. One hundred feet has to be done by certificate of, by certified mailing with return receipts requested. The applicant has done that, and I do have copies of those certificates. Normally, that is not required for development plans or subdivisions. But because it's a rezoning, it does require that they go out by certificate. The final review comments are then due at a certain point within the review process, and they are provided to the case manager. This is where the case manager will aggregate all of those comments and conditions into a report. If in the event there's a problem with one of those DRT members, those have to be finished and corrected first. Otherwise, the whole project could stop and they won't be placed on the agenda until they correct those issues. So every DRT, any DRT member can hold up an application if they're not meeting any one of those criteria and that that they have to look for. But if everything is correct, then all of that is aggregated into the report. Conditions of approval are presented onto the memo and technical corrections as well. And we start building that report for review. After that report is done, the case manager will formulate the recommendation based on that aggregated review. And they will submit a report to the land use director, the assistant land use director, the planner manager, and our legal department for final analysis and edits. If it's, if the recommendation is accepted by upper management, then we finalize that report and we make a presentation to the planning commission. That's why we're here today, is that presentation is being made to the planning commission. So what we have for this analysis is the first case is for the rezoning, that would be case twenty twenty-two sixty-one thirty-four. And there are certain specific criteria for rezoning that the applicant has to meet specific, specific to fourteen three C. And in this case, when we look at those criteria, one, there's three options that the applicant has to meet. He does, the applicant does not have to meet all three of them, they just have to meet one. In this one, there was no mistake in the original zoning. And there was no conflict between the general plans. There is a conflict between the general plan and the future land use map and the existing zoning. And that was, that was identified through the review by staff. Because the originals, the the future land use map identifies low density. But the zoning is actually very low density at R one. So by them requesting R three, they are in line with with the general plan policies, and they're coming into compliance with the general plan. So we we believe that they've met that criteria. The second item is the rezoning requirements of Chapter fourteen have been met, and they have been met. The applicant has addressed all of the criteria that all of the DRT members needed in order to move forward. The third criteria is the rezoning is consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan, including the future land use map. Well, again, in this case, the future land use map and the current zoning are in conflict. The applicant is bringing the property into compliance by rezoning the property to the policies required by the general plan. Here, the area in question is a triangular piece, and as you can see, it's a three to seven units per acre as opposed to one to three dwelling units per acre. So that'll give you an idea of that, why it's being corrected. The sixty-seven lot residential subdivision in an R three zone district will require thirteen point four affordable housing units with a point four is paid as a fee in lieu of, as opposed to order of a house. The city, let's see, we're going into number two, three. The rezoning is consistent with the applicable policies of the general plan. It is. We're going to look at criteria four. The amount of land proposed for rezoning and the proposed use for the land use is consistent with city policies. And it is, the general plan prohibits anything under two acres to be zoned. And the rezoning criteria also prohibits anything under two acres to be zoned. The only difference between the general plan and the rezoning is you can rezone something under two acres if you're adjusting the boundaries between districts, in which case this is not, they are rezoning. Number five, the existing and proposed infrastructure such as streets, street system, sewer, water lines, and public facilities such as fire station and parks will be able to accommodate the impacts of the proposed development. And we agreed with the applicant, and later on, I do have an image that will also show you why we agreed. Criteria six, unless the proposed change is consistent with the applicable general plan policies, the planning commission and the governing bodies shall not recommend approval any rezoning, the practical effect of which would allow the use change in character significantly different from or inconsistent with the prevailing use and character of the area. Now, again, what we're dealing with here is the general plan policies. General plan already identified this as three to seven dwelling units per acre as opposed to one dwelling unit per acre or two dwelling units per acre. And that's going to make those significant changes from R one to R three. And you'll, you can see how how the differences are going to change the future land use map as well as the rezoning. Affect an area less than two acres, which we know this is a thirty-one acre tract, so it's, it qualifies. Benefit one or a few landowners at the expense of the surrounding land, landowners or general public. Again, we agreed with the applicant's analysis. However, again, we believe that because they're correcting an error, that they are in conformance with the general plan and bringing that property into conformance with code. So now we get to the master plan, and a lot of the master plan criteria is overlaid onto the zoning criteria. So you're going to see a lot of redundancy in what it's asking for. The master plan is consistent with the general plan? Yes, the master plan is going to be consistent with the general plan, and we did agree with the applicant's analysis. B, the master plan is consistent with the purpose and intent of the rezoning district that apply to or will apply to the master plan area and with applicable use regulations and development standards for those districts. Again, the answer to that is yes. And we did agree with the applicant's middle, and it complies. C, development of the master plan area will contribute to the coordinated and affect development of the community. Again, they're going to be bringing infrastructure into that area. It is going to be a coordinated development plan. Number D, the existing and proposed infrastructure such as the streets, sewer system, water lines, and public facilities such as fire stations and parks will be able to accommodate the area. And again, we did agree with the staff's analysis, but here's another, here's that picture I was, I was, I put in place. This identifies the traffic analysis that was presented with their application that went to our traffic division for review. And then, as you can see to the right, you can see the water, sewer, fire hydrants, and street system that can accommodate the existing or the proposed development. Now, with the traffic analysis, I did upload a amendment to the traffic, the traffic impact analysis that the applicant submitted. But the amendment only deals with technical corrections that were required by our traffic review division. The technical corrections did not really affect the substance of the traffic analysis. And our traffic, our traffic engineers here, if you have any questions regarding that issue. So the original traffic plan or the eighty traffic analysis was a correct analysis. There is a better picture of how this would look for the area. Again, most of these images you'll find on the memorandum, I just pulled them right off. So the planning commission, the recommendation from staff is that the planning commission should recommend the governing body approve case twenty twenty-two sixty-one thirty-four eighteen sixty-four Paseo de Vista rezoning and twenty twenty-three sixty-four eighty-eight eighteen sixty-four Paseo de Vista's master plan. Sample motions are two, and the first one is move to recommend the governing body approve case twenty twenty-two fifty-six-three eighteen sixty-four Paseo de Vista's rezoning or move to recommend the governing body deny case twenty twenty-two fifty-six-three eighteen sixty-four Paseo de Vista's rezoning. The second motion is move to recommend the governing body approve case twenty twenty-three sixty-four eighty-eight eighteen sixty-four Paseo de Vista master plan or move to recommend the governing body deny case twenty twenty-three sixty-four eighty-eight eighteen sixty-four Paseo de Vista master plan. That will conclude my presentation for the evening, and I can answer any questions if I have.
Thank you, that was a good visual presentation. Dan, I have a question. In reading the traffic study, is there failure in, on two roads, traffic?
I would have to bring Mr. Pacheco up so that he could answer his analysis of the traffic impact analysis. You want me to pull up that graphic so you can?
Yes, please. You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
You're right, Pacheco, three one three La Mita.
Do I need to repeat the question, Mr. Pacheco? I, in reading the report, I thought I read that there was road road failure at certain hours on two portions of Alameda, one on El Rancho Road and the other on another road. Did I read that right or wrong, or?
Maybe you read that, Madam Chair, I don't. We can look it up, and if you have a specific page, I have the TIA with me, but my understanding, I guess I can speak generally, we did ask these six intersections, we being the, actually, it looks like it's. Okay, there we go. And we did have them do a stop sign warrant analysis for the existing stop signs. And so you may have been looking at stop sign warrant discussions rather, I mean, my understanding is there is not a capacity, when you speak of failure, I'm thinking of through capacity. And that is not a finding. And so we, we did have the engineers look at the stop sign warrants, but I guess my answer would be a brief no.
Okay, and maybe I didn't understand the wording, it's on page eight. It says Alameda and El Rancho further degrades with the eastbound through right movement at LOS F in the AM peak hour. So I don't know what LOS F in the AM peak hour means. And then it westbound through right movement at LOS F in the peak hour, in the PM peak hour.
Okay, LOS is level of service, and for an arterial, it's like an A through F categorization. And so degrades is probably speaking to it going from a B to a C or a C to a D, et cetera. Fail would be beyond D. And so my memory of this, and it's been a few months since we've dug into this, apologies if I can't pull it up out of memory because there's so many we look at, but that there is not a failure, there degrades may mean that, you know, we're reaching.
What is LOS F in the AM peak hour?
Okay, can you?
Does it degrade to F? It's on page eight, under principal findings, on the staff report, I'm sorry.
Let me go to the LOS section of this report. Okay, so Alameda at, which intersection were we talking?
Alameda and El Rancho, and then it's.
Okay, page eleven of this, of the TIA, Alameda at El Rancho.
And Alameda and Cal, um, Calle Napal.
Thanks. Okay, we're just, thank you, Jennifer, for catching, you're, he's speaking to the horizon year. So when we are doing these analyses, we have the engineer look at the existing condition, the build year when it's going to go into effect in ten years out. And so in the ten year out, twenty thirty-seven, the general, yeah, it, there is an issue on Alameda at El Rancho. Well, it degrades.
Um, excuse me, you can't do that, you, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so we're looking at ten years out.
Yes.
That it would degrade.
Yes.
And then I guess there'll be discussions about how that'd be fixed in the, in the meantime, okay?
Yes, that's in the improvements suggested and coming out of the process.
Okay, great, thank you, I was confused about. And I think Jennifer will probably talk about that more. That's the only questions, I have any clarifying questions from Commissioner Pava?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Escobal, in the staff report, I didn't see reference to the number of architectural points in the review of the master plan. Can you inform the commission as to how many points this garnered on relative to the the minimum required? For a residential subdivision, I don't usually ask for architectural points. Those are usually addressed for large-scale residential developments or multi-family developments that are going vertical. These are single-family dwellings that are going to be put on individual. These are single-family dwellings that are going to be put on individual, individual lots. Um, it's not a requirement.
So to clarify, it is not required by code that we do the architectural um, point review for uh, a master plan of seventy some odd units?
Not for the master plan, no. We could, if you would like, to see that as part of the subdivision. But at the same time, the residential component for the architectural review points
No.
are pretty low. Uh, I don't think I've ever seen or heard of anybody not meeting any of the standards under the residential.
Okay.
Pull those up if you'd like to see them.
Uh, I'd be more interested in any, perhaps in Ms. Jenkins' presentation subsequently, and any uh, elevations and illustrations might have because I'm having a hard time with the density shown here and the way it's on this plan.
I didn't request for profiles for the master plan since it's mainly a subdivision. Um, if this committee does wish to condition those to be presented as part of the preliminary plat, we can set, we can definitely add that as a condition of approval. So when they come in for preliminary plat, uh, they'll have those online, but they won't have them now.
I'll defer to my fellow commissioners as, as the case proceeds this evening, if that, that should be something we'd want to see.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to Ms. Jenkins. Okay, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is a truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jennifer Jenkins with Jenkins Gavin here this evening on behalf of Cerro del Norte Partners in request for rezone and master plan approval for the Paseo de Vista subdivision. So I'm just going to go ahead and jump in to the presentation. Just a few quick introductions. As I mentioned, um, my client is Cerro del Norte Partners, Betty Beecham and Vicky Yeomans. Um, I'm with Jenkins Gavin. Engineering services provided by Bohan and Houston, and Dan is our case manager, of course. So as Dan mentioned, we're here with two requests this evening. One is a rezone from R one to R three to bring the property into conformance with the city's general plan. And secondly, is a master plan that generally lays out the design intent for the project. So here is the subject property. So I think everybody were, most people are oriented here. This is Paseo de Vista here. This is Kinda Paul here, and this is West Alameda here, and then Santa Fe River, there a little further south. This is this strip of land here. This is city-owned open space, and there are some future trail improvements planned in this area. And this Arroyo here also is a future, a planned future track corridor. So we're fully adjacent to that, which we think, which we think is great. And then um, a lot of this, this is um, the old landfill property. So a lot of this is city open space as well. So um, so that is the context. Then we have the Los Lomas community directly to our south. And then we have the Kinda Paul and Paseo Nopal community to our west. And this line here is the current city limits. And this is the um, what we've all been seeing a lot in the paper about recently. This is the area that is currently slated for annexation by the city, but I think um, that is yet to be seen if that is going to come to fruition. So as Dan mentioned, um, everything here that you see in the bright yellow is the um, city's future land use map um, designating um, a density range of three to seven dwellings per acre, which is identified as um, low-density residential. So you can see pretty much all of the existing residential development in this area and along the Alameda corridor has that same designation. So the property is currently zoned R one, which as Dan mentioned, is, does not conform with the general plan. And we have um, the Los Lomas community to the south is zoned R two. Um, this neighborhood over here is also zoned R two. And then we have the little pockets of R three kind of scattered about. Um, most everything on the south side of Alameda is zoned R five. And then as you move um, further east down Alameda, you end, you end up with generally R five on both the north and south sides of West Alameda. So the property is currently vacant. And the property is bisected here by an Arroyo. And then there's, there's a larger Arroyo and flood plain that just clips our northern point here. And we are bordered by Paseo de Vista to the south. And um, this is Kinda Paul, and this is um, and then El Rancho Road is over here. And so the blue lines here are existing City of Santa Fe water lines. There are two locations where those water lines stub out to Paseo de Vista. So those are our proposed um, connection points for water service. There is existing sewer in Kinda Paul. There's a manhole about right here, and that is what we're proposing to connect into the cities, to the city sewers. So um, under the requested R three zoning, the maximum permissible lot count would be a hundred and seven dwellings. And that is inclusive of the fifteen percent density bonus that is provided by the Santa Fe Homes program. However, we do not want a hundred and seven lots. We have no intention to do a hundred and seven lots. So in order to memorialize exactly what our intentions are, we have presented a master plan for a sixty-seven lot community, which is um, just under sixty-three percent of that maximum permissible number. The master plan will be an executed, recorded document, similar to way a subdivision plat is executed. When we move forward with the subdivision phase, if anything that we present does not generally comport, the master plan is still at a conceptual level. But if our subdivision application does not significantly comport with the master plan, then we would be required to amend that document coming back before this body and going back before the governing body as well. So the master plan serves as our guide and our, kind of our ceiling, if you will, in terms of, I can't come in with a sixty-eight lot subdivision. Limited to sixty-seven. And um, and so our effective density is just over two units per acre. So effectively, we're looking at a, um, this would be an R two subdivision, grow in a fifteen percent density bonus, and that's how you, and we arrive at this lot count. However, I can't ask for R two because the general, that does not comport with the general plan. So in order to, you cannot rezone property that does not comport with the general plan. You can't ask for a zoning designation that does not align with the general, the future land use map. So we are asking for R three in order to align with the map. However, the, the master plan governs the scope of the development to a um, an effective density of just a little over two units per acre, which aligns with our neighbors to the south as well as um, a couple of neighborhoods I, um, our two neighborhoods that I pointed out in the zoning map. So for a project like this, there's actually no open space requirement in the city code. However, we are providing over thirteen acres of dedicated open space, which is forty-three percent of the site. Almost half of this site is going to be left undisturbed and preserved as open space in perpetuity. And um, also, as Dan mentioned, we are subject to the Santa Fe Homes program. So out of our sixty-seven homes, thirteen of those will be priced affordably in accordance with the um, Santa Fe Homes program. So we're going to zoom in on the master plan here in a moment, but this just kind of shows it in context with the neighborhood. We're proposing two access points on Paseo de Vista, one approximately this location and one closer to our um, our eastern corner here. Um, we've had a um, couple of meetings with the um, Los Lomas Homeowners Association. And originally, our access into Paseo de Vista for our eastern access was more in this location. And they asked us if we could possibly move it so potentially the, the movement of those vehicles um, could minimize the impact on the homes that kind of back up to Paseo de Vista here. And we got with our engineer and we looked at it, and we said, absolutely, you know, we can do that. So um, we have, we relocated that. And actually, I turned out it actually worked a little bit better than what we had originally proposed. So it was a really, it was a really good dialogue, and it was a really good change. So we um, moved that entrance over to the um, to the east corner. And then as you come in, we kind of have our main um, roadway. Um, and then we have three little dead ends that um, go through what we call our developable fingers of the project. And everything in green that you see here is the dedicated open space. So I'm rotating the map, just, we can zoom in on it a little bit better. So this is Paseo de Vista to the um, to the left here. This is the um, the right side of the page is to the north. This is the Paseo, the Paseo Nopal neighborhood over here. And so again, you can see our access points here, kind of over what we kind of call our, our main street in this area. And so this project does have some terrain. This is not a big flat prairie of a site. And so we have um, worked very closely with our civil engineer. And our goal here was to obviously concentrating the home sites where the terrain will accommodate that. And um, so we have, so there's kind of, there's a small drainage that moves through here that we are preserving. There's another small drainage that moves through here. And then we have the more significant drainage that bisects the property in this location. So then where you see these roads going in, those are these kind of the higher points, the fingers, and it does drop down gradually from Paseo. So Paseo de Vista is the high point. So everything kind of falls away from Paseo de Vista. So Los Lomas is below Paseo de Vista as well as we kind of drop um, to kind of the terrain drops to, I'm heading to the north. So these are those kind of finger areas that um, accommodate home sites and, and the roadway improvements and then um, leaving everything else um, alone. So we conducted a traffic study. So listed here, so how this, this works is um, when we are kicking off the traffic study process, we schedule what we call a scoping meeting with Leroy and the city's traffic engineering consultants at Wilson Engineering. We schedule a meeting, we walk them through the project, and we look at the vicinity, and then they tell us which intersections they want us to analyze as part of the traffic study. So this is the list of intersections that we were required to analyze. So starting down here, we're going to go kind of counterclockwise here. So we have Kinda Paul and Alameda. We have Entrey in Alameda. We have El Rancho. And we have, oh, sorry, that's El Rancho. This is um, La Jolla and the High Road intersection here. And then going up to Paseo de Vista, we have El Rancho. We have our two proposed access points. And then we have the three-way intersection here where Kinda Paul, Paseo Nopal, and Paseo de Vista converge at that location. So we go out, we schedule traffic counts. We schedule them three hours in the morning, which is what we call the AM peak hour, the A, the morning rush hour. And we count cars in the PM peak hour for three hours in the late afternoon, early evening to capture the evening rush hour. So we count all the cars so we understand what the existing conditions are, what, how many cars are on the road today? And then based upon how many homes we are proposing, there's a certain trip generation. These are based on national traffic engineering standards that says per home, you assume this many trips, which means how many times a day does a car come and go from a dwelling? They go to work, they come home, that's two trips. Go to the grocery store, you come home, that's two more trips. So it's, that's how the trips work. And so we take our proposed trips and we stack them on top of those existing cars that are on the road. And then we analyze what we talked about just momentarily ago, the level of service. So level of service, so how it determines, how we determine the impact of a project on the roadway network is based on how intersections function. Intersections. Because that is the choke point, right? If you're just on a road and there's, you don't have to stop for anybody, or there's not a signal or stop sign or anything, and you're just going, you got, you're great. I mean, you, you don't have any delays, you don't have any reason to stop. So that's why the intersections are so critical. So the level, it's kind of a grading system, just like when we were in school, goes A through F. And so in the, the level of service is based upon the delay. So, and there's different standards for a signalized intersection and an unsignalized intersection. So obviously, levels of service, level of service A is great. It means there's less than a ten-second delay. You come to the stop sign, you look, you go. So it's really minimal. And um, and then it progresses from there. And um, so our initial study, we looked at the existing. We look at the, what is called the build condition. So once all these homes are built and occupied, what is the level of service? And then projecting to twenty twenty-seven, the build year, if this project isn't built, what are the conditions in twenty twenty-seven? So, because there's assumed to be an increase in background traffic. So the city, or the standard right now is we assume a one percent a year increase in background. So to get to the build year of twenty-seven, not only do we add the cars from this proposal, but we also increase the existing background traffic one percent a year. And that's exponential. It's cumulative. And so just going down the list, Alameda and Kinda Paul, current levels of service are B, and then in the, in the build and the no build. So Kinda Paul is going to become a level of service C, which is still great. That's a great level of service in any kind of urban environment. Um, regardless of what, if this project happens or not, it's still going to become a, a a level of service C, just based upon the increases, the anticipated increases in background traffic. Alameda and Entrey, level service B, and then we get to a B C and a B C in the build and the no build. And then we have, there's a four-way intersection at Alameda, La Jolla. It's La Jolla Road to the south and the High Road to the north. And you can see very minimal change, only in the AM do we have, we um, go from a B to a C. And then um, we were asked to assess would it ever make sense to convert that intersection from a two-way stop to a four-way stop? So we were asked to analyze that. And then El Rancho. So this is the, really the only spot that we um, found that there were some iss- there are issues today. El Rancho and Alameda is a four-way stop, right? And the issue is with the through traffic on Alameda. Because it is, you know, think about it. In the morning, people are trying to get to work. They hit this stop sign at a four-way stop. It creates delay. And um, because one, in a typical situation, you would um, and Leroy can speak to this as well, but you would give priority to the minor arterial. You would give priority to Alameda Street to keep, to keep the cars moving. And the side streets would have a, a secondary priority. But El Rancho is existing four-way stop. So we were asked to analyze one way that potentially corrects the levels of service E at El Rancho would be to convert it to a two-way stop. So the, the cars in Alameda have a free-flow movement through that intersection. So that, that, this is not a decision for my client to make. This is the decision for the Public Works Department to make. We would anticipate when we move forward with the subdivision process that um, there will be more discussion about what is, what is really the, the best solution here um, for that particular intersection. And then, as you can see, the rest of them are levels of service A work really well. So um, currently, right now, the High Road comes off of um, comes off at Alameda, and it is um, at Paseo de Vista. It's, it's a dead end. Um, so after, you know, we submitted the study, we get feedback and comments, and so this is an iterative process. We actually probably had three versions of this, of this traffic study. And so um, we were contacted by Public Works. So as you know, the High Road is a public right-of-way that was dedicated on their subdivision plat. So we would like you, just so we can look at the big picture for this entire area, we would like you to update your analysis assuming that the High Road was open at Paseo de Vista. And we said, okay, it's not open, but we said we can absolutely analyze that. So these are the results of that. So we, like I said, we have analyzed this every, every which way. And so again, in order to really look at the big picture, um, you know, Public Works and Wilson, they're very good about leaving any stone unturned. They really want to get a very complete and holistic picture of the traffic patterns and what is happening in a particular area. And so, um, and so you can, you can, so that analysis is here, really not any real significant differences from the original analysis. And we can come back to any of these slides at any time for any further questions. Um, so we were asked to analyze that and that's kind of where it ended. And, um, you may be, um, and there was a statement in the traffic study that explained why the traffic study was being updated. That Public Works asked us to change our assumptions just for, they can have a, a vision of this for their future planning or whatever they wanted to do. So, um, so we did that. And so I believe there are some community members from the Los Lomas neighborhood who are going to speak to you this evening, um, about the traffic study. And, um, so I just wanted to give a little background context for that, for that discussion. Okay, I'm almost done. So as I mentioned, um, is our site here. This is city open space. And the brown dashed line are, is a proposed trail system directly adjacent to the project, which is again, which is great. And then you can see the trail system and there's already a lot of existing footpaths, a lot of existing pedestrian activity in this area. So it's, it's really lovely. And then this is the big Arroyo here. And there's also a, a proposal for a really fantastic big trail extension along that Arroyo. But again, it's already functioning de facto as a trail corridor because it's the way it's being utilized. And so we, um,
I'm going to ask that, um, people remain quiet, please. Thank you.
So the first two conditions of approval on the conditions of approval chart in your staff report um, relate to the MPO and, um, their request with respect to pedestrian connectivity. So the, um, the first condition talks about access to this proposed trail network east of us. And the beauty of this project is we have public streets with sidewalks on both sides of our streets. And so and we are going to be rebuilding Paseo de Vista with sidewalks, some bike lanes, urban gutter, basically urbanizing this stretch of Paseo de Vista. So as you can see here, we have sidewalks throughout this community. Where we'll have sidewalks on Paseo de Vista. And that is perfect accessible access to this open space and to these trails. So it says, please shall include a pedestrian and bicycle trail to access the property to the east. Well, I think we've done him one better. I think the sidewalk network that is available to the surrounding community is the proper way to provide, to provide that access. So we do believe we are already complying with that condition of approval. Secondly, there was a request that, um, an easement to be provided internally to the community that we're proposing that ultimately also connects to the open space to the east. And, um, so this is our conceptual grading plan. So the dark lines that you see here, and this is sort of the, the easement concept that the MPO asked us to incorporate. So coming off the end of this road that the easement would come through here and get out to this Arroyo, which then takes you into the city open space. And then coming off the end of this road would be another easement that would wrap around. The dark lines you see are retaining walls. And there are going to be some fill slopes. And so this is not going to be a navigable place for trails. We could grant an easement, but the city's not going to want to use that easement and to pay to construct this. This is not going to have good accessibility. This is, um, this down in these drainages, this terrain is, is challenging. So, um, we just don't feel like these easements are practical right now. So what we would ask is let's revisit this at the subdivision stage. This is a master plan. This is conceptual. This, we're still at a schematic level. And so to be saying, oh, well, this is where we should put a trail. It might not be optimal. So what we are asking with respect to condition number two is we, we have, we have to be back before city staff with two applications. Eliminary subdivision plat and a final subdivision. We'll be back before this body for both of those applications. That is really the time where we should be looking in a great, really granular level how the grading of this site is going to work and how an easement like this or something similar could or could not be accommodated. And again, we have a robust sidewalk, public sidewalk network here that offers great access to the open space to the east. And we believe that is meeting the intent of the conditions. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions. Thank you very much.
Any questions from members of the commission? Commissioner Paba?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Jenkins, um, this is a master plan, so it's conceptual. But you are showing, uh, a lot configuration. What are the typical lot widths? What are the range of lot sizes and the types of units that are intended?
So, um, the lot widths range from 50 up to probably 75 feet. And, um, and the, the, the minimum depth of the lots typically is going to be a hundred to a hundred and five feet. So these are pretty traditional suburban sized lots. And then we have some areas like at the ends of some of the hammerheads where we have larger lots that are going to be bumping up to eight, nine, 10,000 square feet. The homes are not designed, but, um, the way this is laid out, this subdivision easily accommodates single-family detached homes. We're not proposing any, any, you know, duplexes or townhomes or anything of that nature. That is the intent right now in terms of the way this has been laid out, that we would, um, everything's single-family detached, pretty traditional.
Yeah, thank you. It is a very difficult property to develop, whether you were doing this at R1 or, or a three, you know. Thanks.
Any other questions? If not, we'll open it up for a public comment. Ms. Moore, you want to explain how that works, public comment?
Thank you, Chair Clout. Um, yeah, so generally, um, if you'd like to, um, give comment on this case, um, either the rezoning or the master plan uh, for Paseo de Vista, please line up, um, here, um, single file. And, um, we will have you sworn in, um, before you give your testimony. Um, you'll state your name, uh, for the record. And then, uh, following the public comment in the room, we will go to those, um, members of the public who are on the Zoom. And we will just have you raise your hand and we will call on you and, you know, allow you to talk on Zoom.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I swear everybody in that's in line, sorry.
Yes.
Chair Clout, do you want to set a time limit?
Yes, and, um, we set a time limit for two minutes. Um, so please stay within that time limit.
Okay, so whoever's going to speak, um, please raise your right hands and they're giving you their time? Is that, you are giving them her your time? Okay, thank you. She, well, you, right, you, you don't need to, you're going to see.
Yeah, you don't need to be sworn in. And just to explain, if anyone in the audience wants to give their two minutes of allotted time to another individual to speak, um, that's allowed and actually encouraged because then the presentations are more coherent.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, go ahead and raise your right hands. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimonies you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And when you step to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Osborne. I live at 128 North El Rancho Road, Santa Fe. My husband and I live on North El Rancho Road in Santa Fe on the section between West Alameda and Paseo de Vista. We and several, several of our neighbors submitted a letter from Nancy Hayden, another resident on North El Rancho Road to Mr. Dan Escobal, the senior planner, the current planning commission division of the city of Santa Fe. Please take time to read this letter as it addresses our concerns. My comments tonight refer to this letter to the city as well as the Jenkins Gavin letter to the planning commission about the proposed development. The applicant Jenkins Gavin states, this area has gradually densified over the years, resulting in a diverse neighborhood of semi-rural county lots and more suburban type development patterns. This is not true. We have lived on North El Rancho Road for 27 years. Our zoning is R1. There are a dozen other residents on this stretch of road. Over the 27 years, only two of these homes have been newly added. Nearly all of the homes on North El Rancho Road are built on mountainous and difficult terrain, similar to the land conditions of the proposed development at 1864 Paseo de Vista. We and the others on our road have complied with the stringent escarpment overlay requirements of the city of Santa Fe, including ponding areas on our properties for water retention from roofs and buildings, planting native full-grown trees around each new building structure, having non-reflective roof surfaces and low-profile building structures. There is no evidence of any current lots with three to seven dwellings per acre in our area, which is what the applicant desires to build using the proposed rezoning from R1 to R3. The Jenkins Gavin letter states that the new 67-unit development rezoning from R1 to R3 would support, quote, preserving community character while promoting much-needed housing, unquote. The applicant states that they will build a total of 13 affordable homes out of a total of 67 dwellings. 13 affordable homes is a start. However, the applicant does not consider that adding 100-plus cars from 67 new residences, affordable or not affordable, will create major traffic jams on North El Rancho Road. Nor does it justify removing stop signs at the corner of North El Rancho Road and West Alameda. The Jenkins Gavin letter states that, quote, "The future development will have only moderate impacts on the existing roadway infrastructure," unquote. It also states, quote, "The traffic impact analysis, TIA, submitted for this project demonstrates that the roadway network has the capacity for the proposed development with recommended improvements," unquote. There are no recommended improvements mentioned. This is patently not true. Adding 67 more dwellings to the daily traffic will result in more than four times the car and truck traffic on this narrow, steep roadway. Our stretch of North El Rancho Road has always been in poor condition. Its paved width varies from 17 fifth feet to nearly 20 feet. At its dirt edges are either eroding open slopes or sheer drop-offs to deep arroyos without guardrails, drainage catchments or curbs. It is not properly graded for high-density traffic. There are no signs warning of steep drops, blind curves or poor visibility. There are steep vertical climbs to the top where it meets Paseo de Vista. In winter, the road is often a solid sheet of ice, making descent risky and treacherous and ascending the steep hills nearly impossible. Very often we go with shovels to the street and spread our own dirt so that we can get out of our own driveways. The submitted traffic report from Jenkins Gavin, re- repaired by Bohannon Huston, I'm not sure how to pronounce it, states, "The analysis found that all intersections except the West Alameda-El Rancho intersection operate acceptably in the existing 2027 no-build and 2027 build conditions." The Jenkins Gavin report suggests that removing the stop signs on West Alameda would make the traffic flow better. In other words, take away the four-way stop at the bottom of the North El Rancho Hill. How could this possibly be safer? This is not only an extremely alarming and dangerous suggestion, but gives absolutely no thought to the added 100-plus cars and trucks that will be going down El Rancho Road trying to force their way into heavy West Alameda traffic. The Bohannon Huston TIA states that, quote, "Crash data collected from the NMDOT from 2017 to 2020 reveal that no more than two crashes per year occurred at the intersection of Alameda and El Rancho," unquote. Really, how many crashes per year does it take to keep our four-way stop at the bottom of our road? The TIA states, quote, "Five or more reported crashes that are correctable by implementing the multi-way stop condition to the intersection must occur within a 12-month period," unquote. It appears that our four-way stop did meet that multi-vehicle collision minimum some years back. Now, the traffic is many times increased with the addition of the Siler Bridge crossing and would be even more exacerbated by the addition of cars and trucks commuting to West Alameda on North El Rancho from the proposed 67-unit development. The four-way stop must stay in place in order to ensure safety for all traffic entering and leaving North El Rancho Road at any hour of the day, especially if another 100-plus cars from a planned development on Paseo de Vista builds 67 su- single-family homes commuting along North El Rancho to work and shop." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Hayden. My address is 105 Daybreak. I live in Los Lomas and I'm on the homeowners association board of directors. Los Lomas is the closest subdivision to this proposed development, as has been stated. We were platted over 30 years ago. We have 67 lots on 45 acres. Today, we have 58 houses. All the private roads in our neighborhood connect to the High Road. And 10 of our houses run directly onto the High Road. The High Road is our only connection to West Alameda. It's steep. It's curvy. And many of the driveways are blind driveways for traffic going up and down the High Road. Our developer worked with the city during the approval process for Los Lomas to gate the High Road at Paseo de Vistas to be used only for emergency access for traffic and safety reasons. That was approved by the city planning folks and by the city council at that time. It has remained so for the life of our subdivision. After working with Jenkins Gavin during the planning phase, we were very surprised that the final traffic study, which was not posted to the web portal until Tuesday after the end of the public written comment phase, that's important. The new final traffic study, which was not in the Jenkins Gavin original submission, the one there was dated February, this one is dated the end of March, says that the High Road will be opened to through traffic. We were blindsided by that. Jenkins Gavin didn't tell us about it. The city has never said a word about this to anybody associated with our neighborhood. And we absolutely oppose opening the High Road. And we will follow up with the city staff as appropriate going forward. This would invite all kinds of traffic, including waste haulers, because there are plenty of them that travel on, on Alameda, both official trucks. both official trucks and folks with a big trailer full of trash. It'll invite all kinds of waste haulers headed to the transfer station to travel on our steep, curvy residential street when there are higher-capacity routes available. This would create also, as the subdivision is proposed and with opening the High Road, it would create three intersections within a 310-foot stretch on Paseo de Vista, Paseo de Vista, which violates current road design standards. Not sure whether it's federal or state or city, but current design standards don't allow that kind of thing. We asked Jenkins Gavin in the planning phase to move their opening that they still have in the middle of our subdivision over to the end so that it could line up with that three-way intersection right now at Paseo de Vista and Cayeno Paul. Because Cayeno Paul and Paseo de Vista carry most of the heavy official traffic today. We really do believe that the Planning Commission should not recommend approval of this master plan until our traffic and safety concerns and those of other neighbors, as you heard from the resident on El Rancho Road, are properly addressed. We did not have time to review this final traffic study. And the inconsequential difference, which Ms. Moore has pointed out as "that's all within allowable range", was darn sure consequential to us. This is a galvanizing issue for our neighborhood. I'm sure other people will talk about this. But we were blindsided. We have technical folk who would be able to analyze the traffic study technically and be able to make cogent comments. But we were not allowed the time to do that because we didn't see the new traffic study until after the end of the comment period. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
My name is Jay Bush and I live at 1700 Watchpoint, which is at the corner of Watchpoint and High Road. We've lived there for 30 years. I just want to start by saying that I propose, I support the proposed development. I mean, I think it's been well-thought-through and the issue that I have is the traffic issue. And I believe that the traffic study's assumptions inadequately reflect the way the existing traffic patterns will change if the High Road is open to Paseo de Vista. And that there will be a much greater impact on traffic on the High Road than the traffic studies show. Sorry about that. the traffic connecting between Alameda and Paseo de Paul, the High Road, if it's open, is the obvious shortcut. In fact, it's almost a quarter-mile shorter to go by way of High Road than the way that people currently would. And coming this way bypasses the three-way stop at Cayeno Paul and Alameda. However, the traffic study in Appendix C looks at the 37 people that currently come and turn to go up No Paul and assumes that only four of them would come up the High Road and the remainder would continue to take the long route. The traffic study looks at traffic coming down from Paseo de Paul and sees that 55, and proposes that 55 people will turn down Cayeno Paul and none of them will continue down High Road to take the shortcut to Alameda. And I think that has the potential to probably triple the amount of traffic on High Road that the study is showing, which could potentially take this intersection from being a loss C into failing. So the other issue that I have is that the study shows a 12% decline in traffic on West Alameda between 2017 and 2021 and uses that as a justification. Am I on time?
Can you wrap up?
Yeah. Anyway, I just say I think the traffic study needs to be revised representing a realistic model of how the traffic will be, you know, how the traffic patterns will change should High Road. And I don't think the project should be approved until we really understand the implications on High Road of that change. Thank you.
My name is Polly Arns and I live at 112 The High Road. And I've lived there for 20 years. And every day from my main room, I see traffic flow, street parking, people walking dogs, neighbors chatting, workers coming and going. And from that vantage point, I believe that opening the High Road and the increase through traffic will create a dangerous situation for pedestrians and vehicles. Our peaceful neighborhood was designed according to the escarpment rules for house placement, and that makes us unique and different. And that unique house placement results in blind driveways on curves, lots of steep inclines, and houses placed close to the road. And I just can't imagine it safely handling this increased traffic flow and commercial vehicles in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And it was that unique house placement in tune with the surrounding topography and the peaceful character of the surrounding area that persuaded me to purchase my home in Los Lomas. it was my understanding that the city had agreed to keep the High Road closed to the through traffic. And I relied on that agreement. If the High Road is opened along with the access road to the new development, there'll be three intersections within 310 feet, as you've heard. And that's an unsafe condition. I just can't imagine that that complies with any kind of reasonable road standards, design standards. So I'm not against a well-planned and thought-out development, but opening the High Road to through traffic is just risky and it's unnecessary. And it must for it to be approved. We need further study made and assumptions tested. And we needed time to make our analysis and come back with this group. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Beth Bloomfield and I live at 1703 Watchpoint in Los Lomas. I actually, technically, my front door faces Cayeno Paul, so I'm quite well aware of the traffic that's already there. I want to start, by the way, I've lived there since 2010. So I've seen what's happened in the last many years. I want to state at the beginning that I have not been opposed to this development. I understand the need for housing in Santa Fe and affordable housing. And it's inevitable that more of these areas are going to be infilled. I have two points I'd like to add and amplify my neighbors here. The first one has to do with process that Mike Hayden spoke to and just want to add a little bit more to that. And also, and maybe a little more interesting to you, will be a little bit about the history of how the High Road came to be what it is and what's going on there. As Mike explained, we had no notice of this revision to the traffic study that opens the High Road. And there's language, I believe, in the, I haven't seen the report myself, but I understand there's language that says we're going to open the High Road, basically. I agree with all these points that have been made and other points that I'm sure will be made about that. The point is, though, exactly as Mike said, that we received notice of this only two days ago. By accident, we were not notified by anyone in the city. We'd been working, or by Ms. Jenkins. I thought it's her job to do so. And we've been having very productive, I understand, negotiations and discussions between our board for the HOA and other interested parties in the neighborhood and the developers and the city. So this really, blindsiding would be the polite word for it. Ambush seems a little more apt. Because of the short notice, only one of our board members, it's not two minutes. It is? Oh, well, I guess I will get to the history. It's interesting.
My name is Celia Fiedler and and I live at 19 Ruta Sinombre. My major concern, so many concerns about adding so many more people to this area primarily is because of the environment. This is a very, very, I have lived in this area for nearly 40 years and I have watched the changes take place in the environment as there has been a greater population. I can't even begin to imagine what bringing so many more people, automobiles, you name it, into this area will do to this environment. There are all kinds of birds, animals that live in this area there. I am very much involved in the botanics of the area. This is a very, it is an old area. I have ruins on my property. It's not an area that could be or should be easily changed. And yet, this planned environment or subdivision would considerably change and modify this area. And it concerns me. I'm worried about this. We have to be more aware of our environment. We all are becoming more aware of it. And I don't really feel like this area that we're discussing can support such a large influx of people, cars, animals, whatever. If the development were scaled down substantially, it possibly would be better, more acceptable, and a less impact. But even so, adding more people, cars, traffic to this area will just devastate so much of the land and the animals that live there and so forth. I'd urge you to consider that, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, I won't go that long. Hello. My name's Michelle Shortle. I live at 26A Paseo de Paul, our neighbor's house at B. And our house are the only houses that directly abut the property without a rope and space in between them that is going to be developed. Okay? And I'll get into that. But I guess I want you to, you know, this is really, this is a significant arroyo that separates the 13-acre open space and the 18-acre. And is the bottom half 18 acres then? Or I might, it might be a little bit different numbers, but. Okay, okay. So I guess, but anyway. So what, I kept thinking, why do these lots look so dinky on this master, on the plan that they were showing us? And for instance, if you look at the map and look at Los Lomas, your lots look way bigger. And they're basically the same amount of land, a little bit more, and the same amount of houses. And it finally occurred to me why. It's because we're using the density for the whole area on the 18 acres or whatever it is that's on the south side of the arroyo. And if you use 18 acres as the basis for it, it actually adds up to R5, which I don't think is in keeping with the area. And I'll tell you how I, the math that I got that at. And I'm also factoring in something that nobody has, you, we had talked about it before, I think, at other meetings, but Jennifer didn't mention at this one. And that's that this is in the mountainous and difficult terrain area, or whatever you call it, where it's basically times 0.75, right? When you figure out the number of lots you can do, okay? And so basically, if you have 18 acres, which, you know, is more or less what they're actually developing, minus the open space, times five equals 90, times 0.75 equals 67.5, which is pretty much what they're asking. And so I know that we want to encourage people to have open space. But this, again, I want to get to, that's the density, but also the terrain. This really, for real, is a grade. It's a grade. It's eroded. As people have commented, it's very, it's difficult terrain. And so to put in that many houses seems really like it would be from the land, pretty devastating. And I'm not even sure how how they would do that without, you know, on the small lots like that, without just stripping it, without bulldozing it, and, you know. And I hope you're not planning on doing that. And I hope there's a way to develop it. But I really think we need to look at it more from a standpoint of its 18 acres or whatever it ends up with the arroyos. And that open space in the bottom part of it, that's arroyos. That's for real arroyos that would, that are there, that are, you can't develop. And the open space, too. I'm grateful they're not developing over there. That's nice. But it's basically because they don't have access to it without a big bridge across the arroyo or something. It's not, I'm sure they're benevolent, wonderful people, but, you know, they don't really have access to it. So I just want you to consider that. I'm worried with the size of the lots. You, Daniel Pava, I believe, was the voice. I couldn't see you when you were talking when you asked about elevations. You know, I'm worried about it's all being like two-the-lot-line, two-story building, you know, houses because people are going to want the maximum square footage they can get, you know? And that would really make it out of out of character for our neighborhood. So thank you for considering.
Hey there. I'm Paula Bertino, B-E-R-T-I-N-O. I live at 109 The High Road. We bought that property 23 years ago. And we, one of the main reasons we bought it is our realtors, working for us at the time, entered the city and said, yes, we're never going to open the High Road. It's, it was put in, it'll be an emergency access, and which sounded great to us. If somebody had to get in there, there was a fire or something happened to the other main arteries, you could open it and get people out. But it was never going to be open. And we live like halfway up on the High Road. And I've got one of those blind driveways. Everyone on this, on the east side of the High Road, the driveway goes straight down to the hill, pull straight in, and then you have to back up. And it goes around a corner and you can't see anything. Even when I get to the top of the driveway, I've got maybe 20 feet on either way to see anyone coming. And this is without traffic. And I'll look both ways. And if someone's going the speed limit, I'll still turn back around and start pulling out. Here comes a car. And then they swerve around me. And if that's the case, when they're coming both directions, then there's going to be an accident. And we've had many, many close calls. And all it takes is someone going a few miles an hour over the 25-mile-speed limit, which 90% of people do, let alone every contractor that drives up and down that road, not it being a throughway. There's going to be accidents all the time. My neighbors, several of us can't, we can't see. Even when we stop and I have a high truck, I still can't see who's coming because the road curves very narrow. It curves down one way, it curves the other way. And there's really barely any room on those curves for two cars passing each other, let alone when our contractors are parking on the street like doing a new roof because our driveways are so short. So no one's studied this. I mean, the accidents are going to be insane, not to mention property value. Can you imagine when I'm trying to sell my house and the guy, you know, potential buyer figures out he can't pull in or out of his driveway safely without being hit by the through traffic coming down a narrow, steep, windy road that was never meant to be, it was never constructed as a thoroughfare. So it would have to be, I mean, something serious would have to be done. But so we don't approve this until this is studied further. And that four-way stop, I agree, it should stay there. I've commuted down that road for 20 years. I've commuted down that road for twenty-three years, and it's never backed up at that four-way stop. It slows the drag racing down that West Alameda, is what it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Werble, W E R B E L. I live at one oh four Starview. Originally, I supported the development. I thought having homes in the five hundred thousand plus range, that we need more of those in the city of Santa Fe. That's not what I'm here to talk about. Like everybody else, I'm here to talk about the transportation issues, which is becoming more and more transparent to me, that it's half-baked. And I'm going to ask that you delay approval till it's clear what the traffic plan even is. I would also like to add that there are, is an additional road that should be considered in the traffic plan, which is Torian. Torian is another road, it's got good access. It's actually the sign that most trucks are now supposed to take up to get to the transfer station. Torian is, you'll have to find, see where it is. It's, it's a very good road. It's a road that's accessible, and the traffic from this new development that's head eastbound can easily take Torian instead of any of the other roads. And that's not even considered. Take a look at the city map, Torian. So that's my major thing. My major thing is I hope that this committee will do its job of doing checks and balances with developers. We need development, but we need to do checks and balances. And particularly, living in Los Lomas, I am very concerned about opening the high road as a through road. It will radically, radically change the character of our subdivision. This, as people said, people will start taking this with trucks up to the transfer station. It's a quiet residential neighborhood. Take a look at it, it's very quiet. Trucks going up, who knows what else? It won't be the same community at all, which will make most of us very upset. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, my name is Christopher Vehil. I've lived at, well, first of all, let me address you. Chair, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Staff, thank you for allowing me to speak and give you my thoughts on this development. I've lived in the area for well over.
Can you give us your address, please?
Yeah, Caenopan, one one seven.
Thank you.
Or zero three Paseo Nopal, whichever the post office chooses to deliver my mail at. Because that's what they did, okay? So, Mr. Pada, is that correct? Or, yeah, you hit it on the head. You hit the nail on the head when you said about the elevations, they're extreme. I'm a real estate appraiser in Santa Fe. I travel throughout north, south, and west Mexico. I see what's happening throughout the area. A lot of people moving in, more in particular in north central part. Okay, we're, we are feeling the impact, and we'll feel it even more. What do we see now? Currently on Caenopan, we see the big trucks, as the gentleman previously said, traveling up Caenopan, where I live on the corner lot, right there, that abuts to Paseo Nopal, Paseo de Vista, Caenopan, there's a drainage, a arroyo there. Heaven forbid if a big truck rolls over on that, because that's going to go roll right into my fence. Oh, the city can buy me a new fence, right, if that happens? But then also, what else happens that, that we've seen? We've seen the traffic really moving fast, coming down Paseo de Vista, they can't stop. What happens? They hit the, the electrical pole. Well, you know, I'm watching TV, and all of a sudden, the lights go out. Tell my wife, somebody hit the pole? She says, probably. We go out there, yeah, sure enough, man, there's someone stuck there. What else do we see? People don't stop at the four-way stop at Paseo, at North El Rancho Road, West Alameda. They don't stop. For the most part, they're skipping that stop sign. It's the same thing down on Caenopan and West Alameda, very same thing. Yeah, every now and then they post a policeman there, and that's helpful, but not in the long term, because they go right back to doing it when they're gone. I submit to you that here's your general plan. This is the way it looks on a flat piece of paper, right? But this is, in reality, what you're seeing right now. This is what you see in the terrain. Go have a look at it. That's what you're up against.
Thank you.
Okay, please raise your right hand. You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Naomi Diamond. I live at one ten The High Road. And I would like to reiterate again, I know this point was made earlier, that when the city council approved our subdivision, one condition was that the high road was not to be opened to Paseo de Vista. And that was very important to me when I had my house built, when I bought my land in the subdivision, and I had my house built there. I also want to say that the high road was built by a developer, Michael Herlocker, who still lives in the development. And he was required to sell the deed of the high road to the city, back to the city for one dollar. We, as homeowners association, maintain, even though the high road is a city road, all the homeowners maintain the road during the winter. We hire a company that comes in and plows our road, the high road, and all the other streets within the subdivision. And I can tell you, I go to work every morning, and in the winter, those roads are icy, treacherous, and many times, you know, as I'm pulling out of the driveway, I can't see what's coming, or, you know, coming up the high road or going down. I also want to say, I was thinking about this. I don't know if it's required to do a noise study in a neighborhood, but I'm very curious as to whether this developer has studied how the, the impact of the traffic would create noise in our neighborhood, what level of noise? And, you know, I think that's really important. And also personally, as a grandmother, I have grandchild, a toddler, who comes and visits me pretty regularly. And I fear, you know, for the safety of my grandchild, when you have, you know, these heavy, you know, trucks and construction coming through. And my house is pretty close to the high road, and I'm concerned for my grandchild's safety as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jenkins, I want staff to clarify some of the issues before.
We still have online comments?
Yes, and we still have people on Zoom to talk.
Just before you close the public hearing, I just wanted.
Yes, no, no problem, we'll give you an opportunity. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Clow. Yes, so right now, I see one hand up on Zoom. So those, those of you on Zoom, and more coming up, I will allow you to unmute yourself, and then please be sworn in for the record before you begin your two-minute comment. Okay, thank you. We'll start with Nancy Hayden.
Thank you. I don't know if you can see me, but.
Nancy. And I'm going to go ahead and swear you in. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, I'm Dr. Nancy Hayden. I live at one three three North El Rancho Road. So can I go now? Go ahead. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for hearing our concerns. As I said, I live at North El Rancho Road, from where I currently work as an engineer and an analyst for Sandy and National Laboratories, where for the past forty years, I've been a technical advisor to the government for protecting public interest, safety, and security. Along with my neighbors on El Rancho Road, we respectfully disagree strongly with the staff analysis and object to the rezoning and proposed development, being concerned, as you've heard, about the increased traffic hazards and the new public safety issues that will entail with the proposed development, that have not been addressed at all in the traffic analysis, as well as the significant alterations to the character of our neighborhood and the disadvantages to the existing community. My neighbors and I have articulated many of these concerns in detail in writing in a letter that was submitted to the Planning Commission and the city staff on Monday, May first. And these have also been articulated by the speakers that preceded me. I want to just reiterate three issues in particular. First, the proposal is not for two point six built acres, units per acre, but for at least five built units per acre on the developed part of this parcel in extremely mountainous terrain. Second, while there appear to have been many meetings with the city staff to review the application, none of these were public, especially those that dealt with traffic safety. None, none of my neighbors on North El Rancho Road have been consulted in the city staff meetings. And also that in the traffic impact analysis, while they talked in this meeting tonight about the intersection, note that the traffic impact analysis specifically excludes, states specifically that it excludes any consideration of the increased through traffic on North El Rancho Road, as in order to provide a quote conservative estimate, end quote, for the impact of traffic as it went along that potential high road in Caen Nopal. So as currently noted, our road is currently, in my letter, is little more than a shared driveway. Questionable whether it currently meets the safety standards of the road as it is between Alameda and Paseo de Vista. The intersections are probably the safest part of our road, which my driveway is at the bottom of two blind hills that are connected by a tight curve that overflows in high rains, and has a steep drop-off into an arroyo directly across the street. And waste hauling trucks, as I've already been mentioned frequently, race up our street to access the transfer station in spite of the posted signs with weight limits. We, the first speaker at tonight's meeting was talking about a vision of encouraging biking and pedestrians in the city. Right now, people use North El Rancho Road for walking and biking. And this would be a non-starter for people to use our road to continue to walk and bike down to the river across the other side of Alameda. So, and then I finally want to note that there's much in the proposal about public access to proposed green spaces. This would require even more additional traffic on El Rancho Road for people to access that. No improvements have been suggested for El Rancho Road, and the improvements for the public space, you know, the sidewalks, et cetera, are only along the part of the development that's adjacent to Paseo de Vista and not for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's see, the next hand that I see up is Jean Salazar. Please, Jean, unmute yourself and state your name for the record to be sworn in, please.
My name is Jean Salazar. I live at sixteen oh five City Lights.
Okay, do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My home lies within the city of Santa Fe limits, and it abuts this thirty-one acre parcel being considered for rezoning from R one to R three. This rezoning is to accommodate a proposal for sixty-seven units on thirty-one acres, thirteen of which will be affordable and priced around three hundred thousand dollars. The other fifty-four units, fifty-four units, will be offered at a market rate of seven hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars. You heard me right, seven hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars. This is housing Santa Fe does not need. These homes will be purchased by the wealthy as second or third homes, and by investors to use as high-end, short-term rentals. We all know that. I ask you to leave this parcel at R one zoning and develop the entire thirty-one acres in modest, single-family homes. This is housing Santa Fe does need. These houses would be available to teachers, healthcare workers, firefighters, and the like. As to affordability, that seems to depend on the finances of the buyers. R one zoning allows for thirty-one units on thirty-one acres, one unit per acre. However, thirteen acres in this parcel are not buildable. That leaves eighteen acres for thirty-one homes, which comes to one point seven two units per acre. This parcel is in an escarpment district, and these homes would be nestled into the hilly landscape. They would not stick out as inappropriate to the rural nature of the surrounding area, which is the recently famous Area One B. Area One B is a patchwork of small farms, with ordinary homes, which at the moment still lies in Santa Fe County. The homes which I propose would not bring instant urbanization to Area One B. I would be fine with my Santa Fe tax dollars spent on water and sewer hookups and the paving of Paseo de Vista to accommodate this new development, a small home. But I object to those tax dollars being spent on utility hookups and paving for a development of mostly high-end units. I'm tired of developments using supposedly affordable housing as a smokescreen to make big bucks building housing the city does not need. The city's plan to build our way out of our housing situation hasn't worked. So stop it. Leave this parcel zoned R one. We will find ways to fill our housing needs without the likes of Homewise. There are other organizations doing this work. It is a slow process, but ultimately, a more successful one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sorry, dealing with some Zoom stuff over here. The next person I see is David Moore. No relation. David, yeah, please, you know, introduce yourself, state your name, and be sworn in for the record before your two-minute comment period. Thank you.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
He is unmuted, but he, we're having some, David, we're having some technical sound issues. We cannot hear you. So I'm going to go to the next person on the list. Oh, sorry, David, is that you?
Can you hear me now?
There you are, yes. That sounds much better, thank you.
No problem. Yeah, so Madam Chair and members of the commission, thank you very much for the opportunity, and apologies for the technical issues there. Yeah, I live in Los Lomas.
David, yep.
I'll need to swear you in. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Now, we have your name, please state your address as well.
Sure, seventeen oh seven Purple Asta.
Thank you.
And that's in the Los Lomas subdivision, where I've been living for nineteen years. And I'd like to echo two parts of some of the comments that other members of the community have made. One, around the way in which the revised traffic report was submitted after the comments, the public comments period had concluded. And that suggests, you know, a lack of openness and transparency, which runs counter to some of the discussions we've had with the developers and the representatives. So that's disappointing. But obviously, the main point is that the high road is not designed to function as a through road, as I've said, it's steep and winding. And unlike some of the other roads which connect between West Alameda and Paseo de Vista, it has four other roads leading off it into the subdivision. And so as far as I'm aware, since we have very little time to look at the traffic analysis, there's been no analysis of what would happen at those intersections if there are an increased traffic, through traffic. And so it seems to be a very big safety issue that I would recommend the commission take the time necessary to investigate and research more fully, especially if, as the limited amount of information which was presented seems to suggest that the impact on traffic at the intersections which were analyzed, the impact of opening a highway would be very limited in terms of making a difference to those intersections, but would make a very big difference. but would make a very big difference to the possible safety in the Los Lomas area and also to the character of the neighborhood, especially since, as we've heard, the city initially made representations that the opening would never be used except in an emergency through to Paseo de Vista. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, and let's see. Looks like the next person with their hand up is Connie Deschamps.
Yes. This is Connie.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Connie Deschamps, 1703 Purple Asta. I am a resident of Los Lomas and I echo the sentiments of the other people in my subdivision. I am not opposed to the new subdivision. I know that we need housing in Santa Fe. And my main concern is the idea of opening up the high road. When I bought the house eight years ago, it was with the idea that this was a closed street that would not be a throughway for trash trucks, general public, making a quick way to get up to the next street up. And I fear that opening Purple Asta would change the neighborhood greatly by making us a much more noisy neighborhood, a much more traffic neighborhood, would really do nothing to help the new subdivision, would just provide a quick access, as Mr. Bush showed earlier, for people that are looking to get to the dump. I'm happy to have more housing in Santa Fe, but there's no reason to ruin a lovely neighborhood to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. Let's see. The next hand I see is Martin Romero, please.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Martino Romero. I live on 1807 B North Alvarancho Road. I also own a home on 1807 West Alameda as well also. So, Madam Chair, thank you, members, thank you for the time to speak. I, just for the sake of time, I want to just echo what my neighbors have already talked about. The traffic is a huge issue. I think this process has been disingenuous to the people that it actually affects. I know there's a process as far as notifying people and certainly community members. However, the people that this actually affects, we've not been notified of any of this. Today is the first that I've heard of them wanting to remove the stop sign on West Alameda or North Alvarancho, other than the lady that's been around for 40 years. I've been around for 30 years. I built my own home there on North Alvarancho Road. So I think it's just disingenuous and that we weren't notified of any of this. I think this traffic study has to be looked at. I know Mr., I think Leroy Pacheco indicated that it meets all requirements, et cetera. However, I am concerned, you know, I've actually witnessed accidents that have happened there constantly. And to be honest with you, if this subdivision does happen, if it does happen, who's going to maintain the road? Right now, North Alvarancho is falling apart. You know, the city of Santa Fe hasn't stepped in to correct any of that. So with, once this construction takes place, when it falls apart completely, who's going to redo the, do the road? Is it going to be the people doing the subdivision in the back? Or is it going to be the city of Santa Fe? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last hand I see is Steve Oles. Steve, make sure to state your name and be sworn in before your two minute comment period. All right.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Steve, looks like you're unmuted. We can't hear you. Let's see. Oh, looks like you're muted. See. Okay, looks like you're unmuted. Do you want to try speaking? We can't hear anything. Okay. Sorry, Steve, it doesn't look like, oh, we're able to hear you. Yeah, Steve, I'm sorry, I'm not sure what kind of device you're logged in on the Zoom, but if you want to use the phone number to call in on your phone, we could try that. Just find that real quick. Yep. Okay, so Steve. Okay, if you want to try to call in, phone number is 1-719-359-4580. And then, yeah, all the numbers are on the agenda.
I think, is there somebody else from the public that wants to speak? So why don't we go ahead and do that? See if Mr. Oles.
Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gael Lutasini and I live at 26B Paseo Nopal. And I do want to second, I just to put it out there, the woman who called in and said that we don't need more homes that are going to be rented as Airbnbs. We have a brand new home that just got built on Paseo Nopal that is an Airbnb. And I also feel like we have plenty of neighborhoods where we have big homes that are very high dollar amounts. And same thing, I'm not opposed to development. We need it. We need more homes. I know it's a big controversy and a lot going on and being explored on that level. But it's true that I don't know that we need more high end. And considering the topography, we walk that, a lot of us walk that area every day. It's hard to imagine that so many units can be put in without destroying a lot of the environment. And it is amazing right now. There are flowers blooming everywhere. And I know it's people versus nature. It's too bad it's come to that, but I do feel that it should be considered. And I think something very, very sweet could be created with less units.
Thank you. Has Mr. Oles called in?
Let's see. He has not. Let's see. And I did get a note from our Ben and our IT that he says something with your settings is likely off, Mr. Oles, so.
I think we need to move along.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Apologize.
Is there anyone else from the public that wants to talk either on Zoom or in present? If not, we'll close the public hearing. So, Mr. Escobal, I think what needs to be clarified is I, to try to put this in perspective, as I understand, the staff asked the developer to do a traffic study and sort of set the parameters. Then recently, they went, came, went back to the developer and asked them to redo the study to look at what traffic would look like if the high road was opened. Is that correct?
I think for the most part, I'll let our traffic division answer how they communicated with the applicant.
Okay, and I'd like to address, I mean, I don't think that there is a understanding that the high road is going to be opened. I think that there was just a look at what if it was. But could you also address sort of what the city's intent is on that? And if, in fact, the high road was ever open, what would the city have to do to give notice to the neighbors or anything like that?
Okay, again, I'll let our, let our traffic division answer those questions. I am not aware of any arrangement with any public roads that are required to be closed. I don't, I'm not aware of that one here. I do want to clarify a few things. We'll start with the mountainous and difficult terrain, and I'll just read the definition. Any parcel or portion of a parcel that lies in the area labeled as mountainous and difficult terrain on the official zoning map and where over 25% of the square footage of the parcel has an existing slope of over 20%. So in the packet, you will, if you go to the applicant's data, you will see that they provided terrain management plans. One of those was a slope analysis. They are stamped by surveyors and engineers. So they did not meet that definition for the mountainous and difficult terrain. And I believe our terrain management engineer or subdivision engineer is on Zoom if you have any questions for her regarding what she found in their proposal. It is within the escarpment overlay, the ridge top, but that ridge top only runs along that section of the road. So it's, 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 it's not hitting the balance of, it's not hitting the property at all or in terms of a significant way. And they'll definitely be, when the subdivision comes in, will have a more detailed idea of how those lots are going to interact with that very small area along the roadway of the ridge top. We would, I don't think they'll be allowed to build on the ridge top. There's not enough of it there for that to happen anyway. With regard to noise, that was a question that came up. Noise is regulated by Chapter 10 of the city code, not Chapter 14. And within residential districts, nighttime noise DBA is at 55 DBA. No, daytime is 55 DBA, nighttime is 50 DBA. So it does allow for construction and various other levels of work within any area, as long as they don't go above those DBA requirements. We do have machines downstairs that I believe we, we can set up. If there's something happening, we can go out there and check. But I don't usually see or hear complaints during the day of people exceeding that 55 DBA requirement. With regard to points, as you indicated earlier, for architectural points. So the highest required points is 205, which is in the commercial districts, to 105 points. The lowest is the industrial districts. The industrial district is, I believe it's 175. The residential district is 180. So I'm sorry, I lied. The industrial district's 155. And then the residential district's at 180. So it's a very low threshold for every single city, every home in the city of Santa Fe to meet. It's very odd that anybody would not make it. They'd have to really try hard to go outside of those normal Santa Fe style homes to, to really breach those parameters. With regard to our application process, which we've, we've talked about on many applications before, but my obligation is to review an application submitted by an application, and that is the obligation of the development review team. Nobody else is an applicant. So when we interact with the applicant, our job is to force this application to come into compliance. That is, that is, that is our main goal. So by the time they come up to this body, we are requiring them to meet all of the standards. And those are through our conditions of approval, through our technical corrections. If they did not, if they disagreed with any of those, there's a good chance that we wouldn't recommend approval because they're not, they're not agreeing to the conditions that Chapter 14 has charged me to review their application and hold them, hold them to a specific standard. So by the time we get here, if we're recommending approval with, given all of the development review team members, and you've just saw how many of them review, how many eyes are on this application, they are compliant with subject to conditions. It is true that a rezoning is a discretionary item. It isn't like a development plan. It isn't like a subdivision. It isn't a single family dwelling where you have entitlements, and it's a lot harder to deny an application. Here, it's, it is, you're looking at somewhat subjective items, and it's a discretionary item. And you've seen this many times. You've seen a lot of rezonings that have come before this body. We believe that they've complied with all of the standards, especially since the general plan has already targeted this area as three to seven units per acre, which means by rezoning to R3, they are complying with the general plan. They are moving towards meeting the city's policies and goals for that area. Will it meet some of the expectations or the patterns of development or the neighborhood? To some, it's not going to, it, it isn't, because they've enjoyed large lots, very large lots. And with the larger lots, bigger houses, you get more expensive homes as well. Prices mainly attributed to supply and demand. Right now, we've got a high demand and low supply. That's just the way it is. And I think that's pretty much the way it is around the country. That's why there's an affordable housing shortage everywhere. With the more homes that you put on a piece of property, the more affordable housing units you're going to get. With the lower densities, you're not going to get as many affordable housing units because everything is, is relative to the numbers, right? So outside of that, we believe that the application does meet all of the criteria to change the zoning and all of the criteria to approve a master plan. And I'll go ahead and turn it over to our traffic.
I have a one question. The applicant did say in terms of condition number two that they wanted it to state that they can wait and address that at the preliminary subdivision plat as opposed to addressing it before the development plan is filed. Are you okay with that?
I support our development team comments and conditions. So we would not be in favor with, with changing those conditions or waiving them or pushing them off to a different stage.
So you, you're, so the city's position would be that they need to address that before the development plan is.
Before they file the master plan.
The master, yes, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee, I think I'll clarify the timing of the TIA that the public got access to. The developer submitted their TIA with their application in February. It was reviewed thoroughly by Wilson and Company. And it was finalized end of March, March 31st. That should have, so that's, there's been no post-March work done at all with traffic.
And when you say it was reviewed by Wilson and Company, you're meaning that the city of Santa Fe hired Wilson and Company to review the traffic plan that the applicant put together with another traffic engineer. Is that correct?
Correct, with Bohannon Houston. And so it was submitted in February. It was reviewed and finalized at the end of March. When questions started coming up early this week about it, somebody must have noticed in Land Use that the applicant's original TIA is what was online. And so that is what is different. But the, there was no work or no change to anything post-March 31st, which it's in the public's and everyone's best interest to have the reviewed finalized TIA. So the outcomes would not have been different. There's no change in criteria that took place between, between that time. So I just wanted to, hopefully the committee understands the. that, that point. Your other question, I believe, was about.
The issue with the high road.
The issue with the high road. So Wilson and Company is, you know, they don't live here. They're not really engrossed in the, but they're looking at solely the traffic engineering operations, which is why the traffic scoping meeting identified what would be looked at. They're also looking at all modes of traffic. The city has a complete streets resolution. So we're looking at motorized, pedestrian, bicycle. And so the assumptions of what the opening of high road may be, whether it's motor, I mean, there's an assumption that it's motorized, but we're looking at all modes of traffic going on, on all of those streets affected. Specifically with respect to the high road, the only information that the engineering team had is the plats that were part of the submittal. And on the recorded plat for the high road, which the city owns and maintains, is, as I understand it. Well, it's a city road. It's a city road. It's not a private road, and the note on that recorded plat states access to Paseo de Vista will be constructed concurrent with the improvements for phase two of the subdivision. So that's what's in the legal record for that city-owned road, which the engineers then said, well, let's look at all of the, at all of these intersections. And you know, we're at a very high level master planning stage of review. I don't know specifically where the subdivision's roads are, so th- this will be updated. So the traffic impact analysis does not end here. This is for a master plan. There was no specific recommendations coming out of this. Now, with respect to the stop sign, which also came up, we asked the, the developer's engineer to look at the traffic stop signs and stop sign warrants are based in federal law. They're in the Code of Federal Regulations and they, they need to be warranted. So we, we wanted to understand existing and impacts on the warrants for that. My understanding is that the finding currently with, with respect to volumes and such are not met at that stop sign. And, and what prevents, I mean, what keeps them there is their site distance issues heading north out of Alrancho and Alameda with fences that have put up and, and walls and such that it's not any recommendation or there's no action by the city to remove the stop sign now or necessarily at any time. The study did show that its removal does improve the operation of Alameda's levels of service. So that, that's information the city gained. Valuable information that the city has gained through this traffic study. And so, I, you know, I think this is great conversation. I don't think that anyone should assume activities will happen from that. But we were looking at all of those intersections that we gave them because they're city-owned streets and, and, you know, we're looking at pedestrians, bicyclists, motorized traffic and, and its impacts, so.
So, so I'm confused. So hi, high road is a public road. The city of Santa Fe owns that road?
Yes.
And is it blocked?
There's a gate, I suppose, on the north end is what I'm hearing. There's a gate to Paseo de Vista.
And is that typical of public roads? Is it supposed to be there or what?
Well, the public record that the engineers had was that note that I read, access to Paseo de Vista will be constructed concurrent with the improvements for phase two of the subdivision.
And you're talking about this other subdivision, the one that's currently there?
Yes.
And phase two's already been completed?
Correct. So that is, you know, the, it was without understanding the engineers and describe, well, we need to look at these seven intersections and look at the volumes of traffic and, and such. And that's how we are in this conversation. But I think it's a good, high-level conversation because as the designs get closer and the focus gets narrower, you know, it's healthy to have all of this on the table at a master planning stage. I hope everybody agrees, but I think it's a great conversation.
Unless you live there and they lift the border. It might not be a good conversation. So what is the city's intent in terms of that, that road?
Well, I think that, you know, as I stated at the beginning, we're looking not only at motorized, but as I look at the area with bikeway master plans, pedestrian master plans, and the existing conditions with respect to alternative modes on Nopal or on, what is the other one? Alrancho, there we go. And this existing city street with sidewalk lighting for a direct connection to the Santa Fe River Trails, I guess that's south. So I, there, I don't think at a master planning stage, I would say there is a outcome that's given. However, we're looking at all of this operation of roadway network with respect to all modes of traffic. And that, I guess, would be this current state, which is what I believe the engineer for the developer did, which is why you know, at a master planning level, and as these, as these traffic issues get sort of more focused with how they will address pedestrian traffic, how they will address bikeway master plan integration and such, it's a to-be-continued conversation with this committee, with the bike, the pedestrian access committee, MPO, et cetera. We're at a master planning level, but the intention is as it is everywhere in the city.
Thank you. Ms. Jenkins?
Yes, thank you, Chair Clow. Commissioners, I just wanted to, just dovetailing off Mr. Biceco's statement, I just wanted to offer maybe a little more clarity. And so when we were asked, when the city's engineers saw that the high road, that's a city street, so maybe we should analyze it with respect to that north connection, potential north connection, say to this. It's really an effort to be thorough, to look at the entire area network holistically, play a little bit of the what-if game. So how would things function or how would the, the results of the traffic study potentially change in that condition? So we were asked to analyze it. That's it. There's a statement in the traffic study that speaks to the genesis of that revision that says that Public Works, as a result, asked us to analyze this. So I completely understand and respect why members of the Los Lomas neighborhood would read that and think that a decision had been made. It's, I completely understand and respect why there was, they reacted to that statement in the traffic study. What you don't have is a memo from Public Works saying we're going to open the high road. You don't have that. It's nowhere in the staff report. It was a statement, potentially a poorly crafted one, in the traffic study, speaking to why was the study being revised? That's it. As the applicant, we have no position here. We are not advocating for the high road to be open. It is based on the traffic study, as you saw, the results don't change that much. So, so like I said, we are, you know, we're agnostic when it comes to this particular question. And as Leroy said, it's a good conversation. And, and Los Lomas has shared that there, there's, there's an old agreement in place. So great. And if, if there is, that needs to be honored and respected. So, you know, we're, we're at this master planning stage. When we get to the subdivision stage and we really drill down on all this, you know, there's going to be an update to the traffic study at that time. And so I would think if the city does make a decision to do something different from what the existing conditions are, that'll be addressed at that time. But the city is not making any proclamations right now about the future of the high road. They just are not.
So that's what I understand from what we've heard. I have another question. So the, the traffic study was completed and filed in March, is that correct?
There were actually three versions of the traffic study. So we originally, we submitted an application, our first application did not include the master plan. And we submitted a traffic study with that application. And we got some technical corrections, like typos and maybe, I think your math is wrong on appendix five, you know, those types of things. And then in working with staff, we modified our application, did some revisions. We had a follow-up E and N meeting. And, and we incorporated the master plan into the application. So at that point, we, we, we updated the traffic study and submitted that with our revised application in March. We got another round of comments from Public Works, and that's when we were asked to look at the stop sign warrants along Alameda. And we were also asked to change our assumptions so they could have a complete picture with respect to, to the high road. And so that was, that was the study that was completed at the, at the end of March.
And was that study filed then with the application?
Yeah, well, that, that study was, it was, it was resubmitted to the city because the application was already in process. So it was, it was a resumittal to, to address their comments.
Any of the other commissioners have questions? Hi, Commissioner Lawrence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Escobell, if I could, I wanted to ask about the timing of the information included as part of the packet of materials for this case. So I understand that perhaps some neighbors, some residents did submit letters. I don't think that I saw those in the packet of materials. Can you tell me if those were received? Tell me what, what that timing was?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lawrence. The policy that we have is that applicants have to submit those letters directly into Prime Gov. Members of the public, sorry. We no longer put those in the packet. We've had too many problems in the past and it was creating too much of a problem. And we did it originally as a courtesy. But now, since Prime Gov has been modified to include letters as well as attachments, everybody is required to put those, that information up to Prime Gov, and that's why it's set up that way.
And anyone who tried to email a letter, provide a letter in another way was informed of that. And in this case, they didn't seem to do so, is that correct?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Lawrence, I can tell you that given the workload that we have and the deadlines that we have, there's a point of time where I just shut down my email in order to get my work out. I, I cannot do both because the amount of people that email us, when you think of eighty-three thousand people in the city of Santa Fe, replanters from construction.
All interested in a case.
From construction to a case, it's just, there's no way I would ever finish anything. So I, I focus on getting the packet out so that it can be at this meeting on time.
Okay, thank you.
With regard to when we received the information, as you recall, the presentation, the rotor review, it is not uncommon where the DRT members are working directly with the applicant in order to achieve their requirements for the section that they have to review for, the state statutes that they have to review for. And sometimes those don't get through to me as changes to the packet material so that I can keep up with that. This was one of those cases where I got that information after we had already built the packet. So I uploaded what I got immediately in order to, to put it up. That's, that's just how that works. It, it has happened in the past as well. It's just the way. We're trying to narrow that down and lock it down, but it is difficult.
I, I do want to express a concern about that because I do believe that as, as a commissioner, I am not always aware if late information is added. And so I do think that that is potentially problematic if things are added this week of the hearing when I, I tend to download all of the materials and review them all over the weekend. So I do, I do have some concerns about that in terms of making sure we have a full record that we can review and make sure that we respond to. To circle back to public comments, so people can submit public comment via Prime Gov, they can upload letters. What is the latest time when they're able to do that?
I'd have to defer that to Maggie. I'm not familiar with.
Thanks, yeah. Chair Clow, Commissioner Lawrence. So we accept comments on Prime Gov up to Monday night at five PM. And they're packaged by staff and then uploaded, you know, with the packet material, so.
Great, thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I would just suggest that I, I do still have some concerns that maybe we don't have, have full information. I do appreciate everyone being here and speaking. I do think that we got a lot of information through that method. I mean, I would have a lot more concerns if I didn't have all of you here willing to speak. So thank you for that. Those were the questions I had right now, Madam Chair.
I just have a couple of comments. I believe that Geraldine Gurley emails each of us if additional materials are added after we get notice that the packet is online. Because we have that a couple of times.
That is true, yeah. She does. And so I think the it might, because, right, so Geraldine, and we can, you know, kind of talk about our process here a little bit for everybody. So, you know, we, we finalize and this kind of dovetails off of what was in Mr. Escobell's presentation. And so the, the packet of materials is finalized on Friday, hopefully by five o'clock. Sometimes we go a little bit late. And that's uploaded by Geraldine. And then she usually sends you all, you know, an email saying that the packets are available. In this instance, you know, the, the traffic, the update to the traffic impact assessment wasn't additional material per se. It was like a mild, you know, edits and technical corrections to it, but we still wanted to get it out there and, you know, correct I guess our error in uploading an, an older version of it. So that was, that was the effort there. But yeah, we do, you know, generally alert you guys if there's been a change or something added that wasn't there. So.
And also is, there's public notice in terms of how the public can upload their comments?
Yeah, there, it's on the agenda. So on the public comment, notice on the agenda says, members of the public may submit comments including attachments by five PM on Monday before the meeting via the virtual comment button on Prime Gov. Comments and attachments will then be published after this deadline.
Thank you. Any other questions by Commissioner? Yes, Commissioner? Smith?
Chair Clow. I must confess, I'm still somewhat confused. And so but I don't want anything, any question I might ask to be misconstrued as thinking that there's been malfeasance or misattention or an intention to do something. And people are overworked. This is controversial. And I really applaud the the sentiments in the room. It's been an incredibly civil conversation about something that is very deeply controversial, clearly for some people. I'm still confused about the high road. It is now closed. No, I know, I, I, I haven't directed my question yet, please. My question, it is closed now. If in fact it is an open question as to whether or not it will be opened in the future. And I lived on that road. And I understood, if I'm getting it right, that the transfer station, that there could be heavy vehicles coming up and down that road. But gee, I can't get an answer just yet because the city hasn't thought about it. That's not anybody's fault in this room. But if that is an open question, not created by the developer or anyone else, is it still an open question? That's my, and I don't need, you know, five paragraphs. If it's an open question, to me, that is a concern.
I would still have to defer those traffic concerns to our traffic department. Since I don't really have any control over whether it's going to be opened or closed. I do understand that many roads will be required to have improvements that maybe, that may have to offset some of the impacts associated with the development or the development that's going forward, whether or not the high, high road is an has to be modified in order to accommodate said impacts. Again, that would be based on the traffic analysis that was presented and how our traffic department defines what needs to happen for those impacts. If they find that there are no impacts that need to occur, then there's a good chance that things may stay the same. If modifications are required as a direct result of a more detailed traffic analysis, then that road will probably have to be modified to accommodate the impacts associated with this development.
If if the latter were found, would the project then be rejected? Not the road project, the development project. Because, help me if I'm misunderstanding. We're being asked to approve something, not knowing what the consequences of that approval will be.
Okay, let me see if I can help a little bit better. So the request before this body is a change of zoning. That is the first request. That change in zoning, that change in zoning has findings of facts that we have to, we have to address. Those findings of facts include whether or not there is infrastructure around that can support the development. If you don't include the high road, there is still infrastructure around to support this development. Is that true for the road profile for the roads? So with or without the high road or the rezoning request. Water, sewer, utilities and transportation needs are available within the area to accommodate this development. That doesn't mean that the roads may not have may, that that doesn't mean that they're not going to be required to modify roads at some point in time. There may be XL deceleration lanes, there may be stop signs. There may be other things that may come about as a direct result of a more detailed analysis for the subdivision. So anyways, that's the rezoning. The master plan also overlaps the zoning criteria, as you saw when I went over that stuff. So it's a duplicate of what you're getting for the rezoning. It may add a little bit more, but overall, it still says, do they meet the general plan? Do they meet the rezoning? Do they meet the code? Do they, is there enough infrastructure to support this particular project? So that you're not burdening the city? The answer is yes. They meet those requirements. So that is before this body. The preliminary plat, the final plat, are when you're going to see more detailed analysis as to whether or not high road is going to have to be included as part of the improvements necessary to accommodate this development. The subdivision. We don't know at this point in time because we're still at a very high level of review. It's meeting the very upper levels of the code as to whether it's meeting policy and whether that policy can, whether the roads and the infrastructure can support that policy. If those answers, again, if if the answer is yes, then they've complied. And that's as far as we can go because we didn't ask them to submit anything more detailed than that because they don't have to. That comes at a later date when they're ready to develop and they're more tightly fit on the plans. This one, they're loosely written, there's no meets and bounds descriptions. We don't know if the any of those lots are going to change by any means. It's a master plan, it's a concept approval. So will high roads be modified? I don't know the answer to that until we have a more detailed answer from traffic when they come in for preliminary plat. Now, if you approve this, if you recommend to the governing body that this be approved, rezoning and master plan. Do you have the authority to deny the subdivision? Well, as you get closer and closer to the entitlements of a project, the code provides standards that have to be met. Just like you have standards to have to build a house. And they cannot be arbitrarily capriciously denied simply because people don't like the way it looks, likes like the the traffic or whether or not the houses are too high. Everybody's used to the to looking at the sunset. Those, those are all entitlements of each individual landowner now for each individual lot that may be approved as part of the subdivision. Can you modify the design of the subdivision? Yeah, I think you have that authority to say, you know what? I think we need to have conditions of approval that better work with the neighborhood within this subdivision so that these things don't happen. I think that's that's a possibility. And you just deny it outright because of the high road? I think that you would have to come up with a really good finding that won't put the city in a position of being arbitrary and capricious.
Still sort of new to this, but since we didn't know about the argument about the high road until tonight, that might argue for postponing this, God forbid, while we get to learn a little bit more.
Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Opposed to being arbitrary and capricious.
That is truly within this body's right. If that's what you wish to do, then you have every right to do that.
I don't think postponing it is going to give us, and Jason, I know is shaking his head, no. That it's, and maybe he could help on this, but I don't think it's going to. Well, I don't know, maybe it'll give us a little more information, but clearly, high road is a public road. Most public roads are open. The city, I would assume, in the future, has the authority to open the road. I doubt if it's just this new development where it's going to be looked at. If that artery is necessary for traffic flow to be reopened. There's other vacant land in that area that also might, in the future, play into that whole issue. Yeah, I guess the only question is, do, does the previous subdivision, people that live on high road, do they have an agreement with the city that says that this road will never be, this public road will never be open out to Alameda? I doubt that that exists because I don't think the city would enter into anything like that. But perhaps, Jason, you can provide us with more information.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'd just like to say that will be thoroughly researched between now and the next time we come before you with this case. So I appreciate the neighbors' concerns. And I'd just like to say, I don't actually see any irregularities with this. The, I think the, you know, the traffic engineers are doing their due diligence, which is completely appropriate. And there, as we, as has been stated multiple times here. This is part of that traffic analysis. There's no there's no assertion that this road will be open whatsoever. And it will be, you know, especially, you know, given the conversation, this will be thoroughly researched. And we will come back to you with a, you know, a very clear analysis. And I won't let it move forward without that.
So are you suggesting that it would make sense to postpone this?
No.
No. You're suggesting that we address this.
I'm suggesting that there's no, I don't, I don't see any irregularities whatsoever. This should not be postponed. Yeah, you know, this will be thoroughly vetted with the subdivision approval.
When we're looking at the subdivision.
Correct.
And it'll be what it is. I mean, if the, if there is an agreement with the neighborhood that this road will never be opened, then there's an agreement.
Will be taken into consideration.
If there's no agreement that says that this road will never be open, then the city has the right to open it if traffic flow requires it.
Madam Chair, yes, that's true. I I tend to agree with the sentiment that's my staff and the the engineers that that's, you know, it is a potentiality out there, but it's probably not likely. I think I I'm willing to say that.
Then.
Sure.
So what I'm, what I'm what I'm not, what I'm not clear about is what latitude the commission has if this comes back. And some of, for instance, could the commission incur that the road could be opened, but make it illegal for any truck more than six wheels to go up the road?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Smith. There the the neighborhood would probably have to get with their their counselor. There are areas of the city. There are some along our Freya, there are some on other roads where the city has prohibited truck, traffic, big truck traffic. But those are ordinances that are 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 adopted by the city. And it has happened. It doesn't happen a lot. But that would be something that the the neighbors have a right to petition their counselor. And the counselor can move forward with an ordinance to restrict heavy, the big truck traffic. And that there are several streets in the city of Santa Fe that do have such restrictions.
Madam Chair, I mean, I'd like to add also, you know, I I'm not making light of any of the neighbors' concerns. I completely understand their concerns. I think something that will come to light is that, you know, it's, it will probably be unlikely that there will be, that people will want to use the high road from from Alameda to Paseo de Vista. Even if it were open, there would probably be a, you know, a small likelihood that heavy trucks or any vehicles would want to traverse that to get to where they're going. That's just my, that's that's my opinion. But I think that will, you know, potentially influence the outcome of the traffic study to, you know, maybe say that they just leave leave the road closed because there's no no reason to open it.
And as I understand, clearly, as we've been told, this project does not need that road to be open to be viable in terms of the traffic study.
Madam Chair, that's correct.
Okay, can we move on? Commissioner Pava.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Escobal, perhaps you or other staff can elaborate on current plans that the city has either planned or actually programmed for improvements of the section of Vista in this location, or in fact, all of Vista, which is in deplorable condition. Cayenopal and El Rancho. And what is the status of those on the major street plan? Aren't those at least collectors, whereas high road is simply a residential street?
To be honest, I did not look at those. I guess the applicant says she can. And I think our traffic division can probably also help with that.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm not sure, who's the vice chair? You are Vice Chair Lawrence and Commissioner Pava and Commissioners. So with respect to Paseo de Vista, as I mentioned, along our frontage, we will be improving Paseo de Vista with curb, gutter, sidewalks, and bike lanes. These governing body recently approved two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a paving project for Paseo de Vista. And and that is imminent. I mean, that is, they're working with their on-call engineer contracts. So and and I think I chatted with Romella about it. And that contract is, I think, going to be approved at the next governing body, I think, next week at governing body. And so that work, she wants, she wants them to start this month. But I'm like, you know, Romella, it's probably going to be June. She's like, I know, but I really want them to start this month. So the the repaving of Paseo de Vista is is quite imminent. I do not unfortunately have any information about any plans on the books for County Paul or El Rancho, but I don't. So Leroy's shaking his head, so I don't believe there is anything in that regard. But that that's the information that I have on Paseo de Vista.
Thanks. And as regards their status, if Leroy is still here, can you address my question regarding the classification of Nopal, Vista, and El Rancho as analyzed in the traffic impact analysis? What are, what are they in the major street plan? Are they collectors? Are they arterials, minor, major?
Collectors and Alameda is a minor arterial. The neighborhood collectors.
Yeah, that's, that that would bear, I think, on on future considerations with regard to traffic circulation. We're only talking about traffic as cars. Level of service is all about cars and inconvenience to drivers. It's not about all the other modes of transportation. And frankly, as a matter of of observations, I do walk in this area frequently, as I live a couple of miles away. I walk up high road through the gate, along Vista and back down El Rancho. I would concur with the observations made by residents that people don't see the stop sign. And and no matter whether this development occurs or other developments occur, that should seriously be looked at. I have been I have learned to be very, very careful crossing from north to south El Rancho across that street. Particularly when the sun angle is at at an angle where it's it's very dangerous. So I would encourage that be investigated and I would highly encourage that it not be a two-way stop.
I'm going to ask that we don't do that. It's not appropriate. Thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
I, if I could, Madam Chair. I've been in this planning business a long time and I respect staff's approach and I've been there. When I look at context, I look at with density, I look at context and intensity. And I I honestly think that I would have concluded that the zoning change being a discretionary action could be interpreted as not really being in context to the neighborhood characteristics we see here. If you wanted to take a large area and average the density, it it probably is within the range of of the master plan, three to seven. Even at this point, if you take in parts of, I don't know, you want to dig in Conquistadora, if you want to kick in the subdivisions along West Alameda, whatever. Surely, the area along Nopal, the area along Vista, the area along El Rancho, these, the context is is quite different from what's being proposed here. And this is a concern of mine when I look at it.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Members of the commission, Councilor Pava, you know, the discussion today with the neighbors is pretty vibrant. And I can honestly say that the discussion between the staff and the applicant can get just as vibrant. When they originally planned for the general plan amendment and the rezoning, they were asking for a down zone from a general plan reduction in policy and a general plan reduction in zoning. I was unable to be able to recommend approval because I cannot go against the policy. In which case, they had to come in with a master plan, but their density is still very close to the R two zoning that they originally planned, which would have been consistent with the area. I just didn't have the ability to provide a positive return for their application. No matter how I looked at it, I wasn't going to be able to recommend approval. And it's a lot harder to go in front of this body when the staff is recommending denial than if they're recommending approval because we're going to follow the code as opposed to not. So that is one of the reasons why they're asking for a rezoning to meet the general plan policy and go with an R three. Because we couldn't bring them forward with a positive review.
Thank you for your considerate answer.
Any other questions? Are we ready to move forward with the motion? Commissioner Lawrence?
Madam Chair, I will make a motion. I I do agree with staff's analysis of the criteria here, which is what we ultimately need to comply with. And so for that reason, I will put a motion on the table to recommend the approval of case twenty twenty-two dash six one three four, the Paseo de Vista's rezoning by the governing body.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Stand.
Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
No.
Madam Chair, the motion has been approved.
And consistent with that, I will also make a motion to recommend the approval by the governing body of case twenty twenty-three dash six four eight eight, the Paseo de Vista's master plan. Subject to the conditions of approval and technical corrections as stated by staff tonight.
Second.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Actually was going to request a friendly amendment to that motion. Can that be done at this point? Can we recall this?
I believe after you vote.
I believe after you vote, you can ask to reconsider an added amendment then.
I don't know if I vote no.
Madam Chair, the motion has been approved.
Thank you.
All right. I've been instructed by council that I can make a motion to reconsider. Is that correct?
Um, if you, someone from the, uh, party that approved, that, that was on the side, the majority side of the vote, could make a motion to reconsider. Um, you can, uh, suggest it at this point.
Now, can I suggest what I would like? On that grounds, I would say that a motion reconsider should also have a caveat that the master plan, which is the overall guiding document to direct the preliminary plat, should in fact contain language to the effect that Cayenopal, uh, uh, excuse me, both Cayenopal and, and El Rancho North shall be considered as, as in, in future traffic impact analysis. However, um, High Road shall, shall not be, uh, considered for opening as a, as a result of this, uh, development.
Do we have the authority to do that?
To do what Commissioner Pava just said, or to make the motion? I don't know if you have the authority to do what he just said.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, you can affect the master plan, you cannot affect the rezoning. So if within your condition, you are asking for additional information to be presented at the preliminary plat, you most certainly have that, that ability to ask for additional information so that it can be packaged with the preliminary plat. Um, with regard to whether High Road can or cannot be opened, I believe that that is, those are technical issues that are not only required to be looked at by our traffic engineers, but they're also highly integrated with our life safety requirements. So I think at the most part, if you want to ask for additional information and make a decision at the preliminary plat level, you most certainly have that capability. But at this point, uh, I would limit it to only requesting additional information and attaching that condition to the master plan.
If, if that is the situation as, as you describe it, Mr. Escobillo, I think the record will show that at preliminary plat time, we will certainly be considering that, that based on the facts at that time. Thank you. I, I'll, I'll drop my request at this stage, uh, for, for amendment to the motion on the master plan.
Okay, thank you. Um, now we'll move to, um, case number 2023-6487, which is 3900, um, Constellation Drive setback variance. And then also, uh, case number 2023-6486, 3900 Constellation Drive Development Plan.
All right. Uh, thank you, uh, members of the commission, um, Chair Clow. I guess I'll give him a second to filter out before I get quite going. Good? Okay, um, so we're here for case 2023-6486 and 6487. Um, presented by, um, New Mexico Land Solutions on behalf of Terrence Hall and Gringo LLC for a development plan and setback variance for 3900 Constellation Drive, uh, which is within an I1 zoning. Um, it's also within the Airport Road Overlay District, which is crucial to this case. Um, other things to consider, it's within the ma, um, Southwest Area Master Plan, known as the Swamp, as well as the Santa Fe Airport Industrial Business Park Master Plan. Um, so the proposal is for a development plan and variance, um, to, uh, develop a 7100 or 71,000, excuse me, 588, uh, square foot storage, uh, facility with 83 units, uh, located at 3900's Constellation Drive on three lots totaling approximately 30, uh, three, uh, three acres and, uh, 3.91 acres, excuse me. These are the, uh, case captions, which I just went over, but I just want to point out, we will be considering, uh, the variance first in this case. Because if the variance, uh, is denied, uh, there will be no reason to move on to the development plan in this, uh, in this case. Um, so off the bat, I'll just go ahead and say we are, uh, recommending denial for both the variance and the development plan. Um, and we'll, again, we'll start with the variance, uh, but I will also just, just discuss briefly about why we, uh, are recommending denial of the development plan. Um, as you know, there will be two motions for this case, approve or deny the variance, approve or deny the development plan, subject to the, uh, technical corrections and conditions of approval, if there are any. So just to briefly go over the, um, basics of the case, this is a storage facility, um, under the name Lux Locker, um, located off of Airport Road, but it's technically, uh, the, the address is off the Constellation Drive. However, the main entrance and exit will be off of Goony Bird Way, which is a fun name. Um, on the north end of the property, um, I think the intention is that the, in, the, um, people who would access this property would come in off of the west road, uh, which I think is, what is that one called? Anyway, it's a different road, um, not off of Constellation Drive. There's also another entrance and exit off of, um, Constellation Drive here, but that is a, uh, emergency access only. Um, so that's not really part of, uh, the traffic considerations. Again, we're looking at, um, what did I say? It was a, um, 83 units. Um, but these would be condo units, so they'd be owned by the, um, owners of the condos, and then the property would be owned by Lux Locker or the owners of the property under the Lux Locker name. Um, the idea being that these are, um, high-end storage units for, um, vehicles, RV vehicles, um, boats, that sort of thing. Um, the buildings have a variety of sizes and amenities, including, uh, Building A, which is kind of the biggest and most lux, which has um, very large units and even in, indoor bathrooms, according to the site plan, although, um, it's not discussed in the report, so maybe um, the applicants could clarify on that. Uh, what else? There's, um, parking, the, um, the guest parking is up near the main entrance. However, there is no onsite parking because there's no, um, you know, onsite employers. It's unmanned, it's a, uh, self-service, um, operation, it's just with an automatic gate. Um, and considering the entire facility is essentially a large parking lot, we, um, we deemed that there wasn't really a lot of, uh, uh, additional parking necessary besides um, kind of auxiliary parking spot near the front with the ADA spot with some bike parking and, uh, pedestrian access there. So it has all of those, uh, facilities. Um, so a big part of this case will hinge on the Airport Road Overlay District, uh, which I'll discuss in detail. Uh, but just to illustrate what that, uh, means for their site plan, um, the Airport Road Overlay District, uh, requires a 100-foot setback for any storage uses along Airport Road, uh, right-of-way. Um, so you can see this red line here is demonstrating of what a 100-foot setback would look like. The, the site plan would have to be reduced by approximately seven or eight units, as well as their trash facilities would have to be, uh, moved, which is those down in the right-hand corner, um, which may augment their site plan even more, depending on how it would work out. Um, oh, and just to clarify, those blue lines crossing across the top of the site plan are overhead power lines, which also have to be clear. They cannot be built underneath. Just why they don't, um, have a enclosure for the recycling bin, um, which comes into play later. Uh, so quickly, I'm going to go over the project background, and I'm sure, um, the applicants will do the same, but we just want to give our understanding of it. Um, so in March 13, 1991, project, uh, subject property was, um, approved for a master plan, um, called the Santa Fe Airport Industrial Business Park Master Plan uh, by the City and County Joint Extranetilateral Zoning Commission. Um, because that was not part of the city at the time, that was in the, uh, that was in the ETJ Extranetorial, um, zoning area. Um, in 2004, it was then also, um, approved for a final development plan and final subdivision plat um, as part of, um, that master plan and was recorded with the Santa Fe County. Um, also approved by the EZC. Um, then in 2007, the Southwest Santa Fe Community Area Master Plan, known as the Swamp, was adopted, excuse me. Um, and the subject property is within the Western Neighborhood Plan area of the swamp. Um, under the swamp's future land use map, um, that the property is, is labeled as a business, business park use, so the, um, the proposed use is compatible with the swamp as, as identified in 2007. Um, then in 2013, the project, uh, the property was annexed into the city. And, uh, uh, shortly thereafter, um, or in the same year anyway, the Airport Road Overlay District was adopted. Um, also in 2013, a lotline adjustment, um, was recorded with the subject property, uh, which is, um, crucial for, for this case because of some of the development notes in the lotline adjustment, um, which serves as the lot, uh, legal lot of record for the property, is the most recent plat recorded for this property. Um, and finally, in 2017, the Airport Road Overlay District was amended to include this requirement for 100-foot setback for storage uses along Sirius Road. Now I'm going to go into detail about what that, um, setback is, uh, says in the code, so because I think there was some question, um, and, um, it's a little bit of an obscure, obscure regulation in our code, doesn't come up that often, but, um, in the Airport Road Overlay, uh, it says any new development, um, it shall be setback 100 feet from Airport Road. Um, if it's one of these listed uses, as you can see here, uh, electrical substations, sexually oriented businesses, storage, which is what this, um, use would apply to, um, so on and so on, vehicles and equipment. Um, yeah, warehousing and freight movement, you get the idea. The idea was that they wanted any kind of industrial uses setback from the road. And interestingly, they also said, um, the, it shall be separated from Airport Road right-of-way by a development not containing these uses, which indicates that they also wanted some sort of buffer, not just a setback, but also, um, either some sort of development buffer. Now that might have meant, um, actual buildings, uh, they, they might have meant that. But according to our definition of development, development really can mean just about anything that's not nothing. So it ha, it can be landscape buffer, could be a park, but it can't be nothing. Um, and it can't be a, a use that's specified here. So that's, that's where we land with, with that issue. Um, so on the question of whether or not a variance is required, which I think we've all established it is, but we just want to clarify why we've established that. Um, in that 2013 plat, the lotline adjustment survey for the Henry Oliver III Family Limited Partnership, um, in the development notes, they had several notes um, that specify that, um, for instance, property development is required to comply with applicable provisions of Chapter 14, Land Development Code, um, SFCC 2001 and subsequent amendments. Um, I don't really want to read all this out, but the point is that they all, um, specify that any future development has to comply with current zoning standards, including the overlay um, as, as, uh, written, uh, in the over, Airport Road Overlay. Um, so that's, that's in that 2013 plat. Um, that gives us, it's, um, that the, the reasoning that we, we had to ask them to apply for the variance that they were not vested for the, um, development up to, um, the Airport Road right-of-way. So assuming that we all agree that the variance is required, um, we also, uh, are, the staff has determined uh, that they do not meet the variance criteria. And I don't want to go through all the variance criteria one by one, but I do want to just point out the very first criteria, which is sort of the baseline criteria. Um, they do not meet because there are no phys, unusual physical characteristics that distinguish the land or structures from others in vicinity. It's a flat piece of land, there's nothing unusual about it. Um, their parcel is not a legal non-conforming lot, it's currently legal and conforming. Um, their proposal is what would make it unconforming. Uh, and there are no conflicts in regulation, the legal lot of record is clear that the regulation that applies is Chapter 14, including the Airport Road Overlay, um, district, and then the, the last, um, issue of the, um, landmark does not apply here. Um, so on, and that grounds, fails the first variance criteria, and therefore it fails all of the variance criteria. Um, finally, I'll just go through our, our, our recommendation for denial on the development plan. Um, so the development plan, uh, for this project is heavily reliant on, um, is regarding the Airport Road Overlay through the variance to achieve, to achieve this site plan. Um, so on principle, this, the staff does not support that. Um, also because of this disregard of the overlay, um, it doesn't meet the development plan criteria, uh, including, uh, the criteria that relate to public interest and the neighborhood compatibility. Because the point of the Airport Road Overlay was to establish those standards for that area. Um, also, the, um, uh, application does not meet the variance criteria. So if the variance criteria is denied, the development plan would have to undergo significant heavy amendment to, uh, meet our code. Uh, like I said, they would have to remove at least seven or eight units, significantly changing their site plan. Uh, we believe that this level amendment is significant enough to warrant us a, a new application, a fresh application. It doesn't, we couldn't just come back with the condition of approval because there's so much things going on, including everything I'll list here, and the following issues, while maybe for other cases, we could fix them with conditions of approval. I think with everything else with this case, they add to the reasons why we want to recommend denial, which includes, uh, the architectural points criteria, which they do not meet, um, and that will require significant design changes. Um, the fact that they do not have a ar- archaeological clearance, that means the city creates ordinance, they'd have to get a new archaeological clearance doable, but, um, doesn't exist currently. Uh, what else? Uh, the application does not meet the, um, streetscape requirements for the overlay district, including, uh, uh, things like uh, seating along Airport Road Overlay. There are some additional, um, uh, criteria that the application did not include. Um, the dumpsters need to be relocated, it sounds small, but that would might mean that they have to remove other units in their applications, so further changing their site plan, further changing the overall development plan to the point that we don't feel comfortable approving this with conditions. Um, also, uh, the application does not re, uh, reach the required open space, um, which requires additional open space or a change in their drainage plan, which neither of which have been met. And there's a condition, uh, significant conditions, uh, with, uh, in terms of wastewater, uh, along with the wash bay, which is where these boats or RVs would be washed off and subsequently drain into our, um, or so, sewage, uh, facilities, but, um, our, our wastewater department has concerns about what could go in there and how to control that, um, that outflow. Um, so all that together is quite a bit of concerns that make us, uh, believe that we don't, uh, this should not move forward, even if the variance is approved. Um, I just included the, uh, elevation as an example of the architectural standards. I think you have, um, have reviewed this, um, but we know that for instance, uh, we can allow white, or the white roofs, for instance, were a big, uh, detractor from their architectural points. Also, the wash bay here is shown as, um, having a roof, while their site plan shows it not having roof, that's a discrepancy. And I'm sure we could figure out with tech, technical correction, but it just adds to kind of our, uh, discomfort with the completeness of this application. Um, so that's the end of my presentation. I'll, um, hand it off to the applicants unless you have questions. Thank you.
Any questions?
Commissioner. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, uh, Mr. Alvarado, just for a point of reference, the Airport Overlay Zone, part of the intention for the setback was that people thought that Airport Road actually is the road people used to approach and leave the airport, so the city should look nicer in that area? But, but am, am I on to it? Is that basically the gist of it, or is there some other reason for the 100-foot setback?
Well, um, Commissioner Pava, uh, members of the Planning Commission, um, my understanding is it's not just about aesthetically looking better, it's also being a more livable environment for the people who live there, and, um, you know, surprising as maybe the Airport Road area is one of the densest populated areas of the city. And, um, the Airport Road Overlay, while, it may not go far enough, it, it is attempting to make a more livable environment, so, um, part, part of the intention is make a more, uh, pedestrian-friendly streetscape. pedestrian friendly streetscape with seating and pedestrian scale buildings, and also not having these industrial uses right up against the road, which would eliminate the possibility of a livable environment in the future.
Thank you for that clarification. One thing I noticed in the staff report and in the plan of the surrounding vicinity or the aerials, there are clearly other storage type units even that are within the hundred foot. I'm pretty sure. Are those are those, were those preexisting before the overlay zone? Do we know that? I'm looking at equal treatment.
Of course. I don't know for sure if they were approved before or after the overlay, if, you know, if they were if it was, if they were proposed after, I think it was two thousand and thirteen that I said that the Airport Road Overlay was amended, then they should have the one hundred foot setback. I'm not aware of any variances granted in the area or anything like that. But I don't know for sure. It's possible that they were kind of legacy uses that were approved when it was part of the county or before the overlay was amended, but I don't have the exact history of that, those uses.
Well, thanks for the clarification. And you did point out that there are notes on the plat to the effect that the overlay zone does apply to this specific property, right?
The plat notes specifically say that the, any chapter fourteen code requirements apply to future development on the property, which would include the overlay zone.
Thank you for the clarifications.
Madam Chair, if I may. Madam Chair, Commissioner Pava, so those adjacent storage units do comply with one hundred foot setback?
Thank you. Now we'll hear from the applicant.
Thank you.
You ready? Is he going to speak at all?
He's going to speak.
Yeah, go ahead and swear both of you in. Do you swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimonies you're about to give are the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Victoria Dalton, nine fifteen Mercer Street, Santa Fe, New Mexico, eight seven five oh five.
Nathan Monzanades, I'm with the New Mexico Land Solutions with Victoria Dalton, also reside at nine one five Mercer Street. Commissioners, thank you for your time. Tori is going to go into a little bit more detail on the history. We're not going to, you know, waste your time, but I think it's really important to know how the Airport Road Business Park came to be and how it's been developed over time. And with that, I'll pass the mic to Victoria, and then I will provide a brief presentation after she's done going over the history. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'll be quick. And just so you can follow this along, Nathan did hand it out. So I'll go ahead and get started. This is pertinent to the history and the approval of the Santa Fe Airport Business Park. So in nineteen ninety-one, the original Santa Fe Airport Industrial Business Park Master Plan was approved by the Joint City-County Extraterritorial Zoning Commission, E Z C, and Extraterritorial Zoning Authority, E Z A, and recorded in the office of the Santa Fe County. A copy of the recorded master plan has been provided with the variance request and development plan applications. The approved Santa Fe Airport Business Park Light Industrial Master Plan established the business parks phasing, zoning, building design standards, and step setback regulations for all the lots within the park. In two thousand and nine, the city initiated the city initiated the annexation process, which included a series of study sessions and public hearings with the Extraterritorial Land Use Commission, the E L U C, and the Extraterritorial Land Use Authority, A L U A. Being the original planning consultant, Mr. James W. Seibert attended the A L U A meeting. I also attended that same meeting with him on March twenty-sixth of two thousand and nine. The meeting minutes, Mr. Seibert voiced his concern regarding the annexation related to new zoning designations and established vested approvals being allowed to be built in accordance with original approvals received. At the end of the same meeting, county attorney stated there will be no effect on projects with final approvals. I have also attached the minutes to this to this document. So in those minutes, I just highlighted the area where Jim Seibert came into the meeting. He did let them know what his concerns were at that time. They wanted to zone all these parks or previous projects that obtained approvals through the E Z O. The city at first thought, the city and the county thought they would call them C two P U Ds. Well, the P U D zoning would have had to require the developer to come back in with that specific use for which was already within that use list. So he did have a concern. And at that time, he suggested that there should be a C two E designation, meaning the property had E Z O approval. The master plan would come with with all existing imposed conditions. This would protect the neighbors and would not be hard to administer. Subject's request would be just against prior approvals. This would provide seamless transition. Where the inequity arises is people with previous approvals have to come back to the city for more, which penalizes those who have gone through the process as this application has. So towards the end of the meeting, and I just highlighted where the county attorney responded to Mr. Seibert, and Mr. Ross stated that, you know, the city and the county are trying to make the process seamless as possible. They might have to continue the process at the city. He did state that there will be no effect on those with final approval. So with the next point, Santa Fe Airport Business Park went through proper channels to develop the park, beginning with master plan approval, followed by preliminary final development plan approval and preliminary subdivision plot approval, preliminary and final subdivision plot approval, all of which were reviewed by the city county officials, city and county officials. Furthermore, a letter of credit was held by the city to ensure proper infrastructure of the project. This is referenced in page four of the development plan report prepared for the project that is included in Appendix C, which is also Exhibit C of the Planning Commission Packet. This project would not require a variance and being at the risk of moving forward had the city initiated annexation not occurred within the limits of this previously approved park. Twenty-five foot setback versus a hundred foot setback. Final plans that created the individual lots for the Airport Road Business Park reference the twenty-five foot building setback as well as the design standards approved with the final development plan. Most recent two thousand and thirteen lot line adjustment plat also designates a twenty-five foot building setback from Airport Road. The subject development is light industrial in nature with various light industrial uses. The useless associated with the previously approved master plan plan project included storage facilities. Therefore, it is impractical to enforce a hundred foot setback on a business park that has already been previously approved, designed, plotted, and almost fully built out. Two thousand and thirteen Airport Road Ordinance, two thousand and thirteen dash one, did not establish setbacks off of Airport Road, which allowed for the established twenty-five setback to remain in place as provided in the two thousand and thirteen lot line adjustment plat. Two thousand and seventeen Airport Road Overlay, two thousand and seventeen dash twenty-four, added the hundred foot setback requirement for new storage facilities. Chapter fourteen dash five point five, C four, which is related to the Airport Road Overlay, states unless otherwise specified, then the original development standards shall apply. Every document that has been submitted shows the designation of the twenty-five foot building setback. The requirement is in conflict with all the documentation that has otherwise specified a prior vested approval for this established industrial business park, which took place years before the enactment of the hundred foot setback now required as of two thousand and seventeen. In closing, the subject area is the last portion that Friends Airport rode within the boundaries of the established light industrial park. The original and current approved uses of the park include storage facilities. It was not anticipated that the two thousand and thirteen lot line adjustment plat would revoke the established design standards, excuse me, of the park. This is a unique situation as it was not caused by the action of the developer. The uses and setbacks were well established and put into place with the approval of the overall park. Other than the hundred foot setback requirement that is being required addressed via significant amount of landscape, and as stated on page six of the staff report, all of the other cities' design standards are met for the proposed project. And if I could just speak to the archaeological report, and then I'll hand it over to Nathan. An archaeological report, a full report and a full study was prepared at the time this park was developed prior to submittal of building permit. It was sent to SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, in which they reviewed it and came back and found no significant sites to be preserved. So we still currently do have that archaeological report along with the comments from SHPO. To comply with staff's condition on that, we can hire an archaeologist and they can take that study and then go back to the historic board for archaeological parents. And that's the end of my presentation. So I'm going to go ahead and hand the floor over to Nathan, and he will go ahead and present the development plan. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Victoria. Thank you, Commissioners. Just going to give a brief presentation. Hopefully it'll come up here. A lot of the information that is going to be shared is in the handout that was just provided to you. It came on for, okay, there we go. So this is the Lux Locker. Why does it keep? This is the Lux Locker, Santa Fe. Doing that. Okay. Lux Locker, Santa Fe Luxury RV and Boat Storage. As previously stated, this is located off of Airport Road, Constellation Drive. The primary access is actually off of Oliver Drive and then via Goonyburg. And just to keep in mind, that two thousand and thirteen plat that for the lot line adjustment was to help facilitate the approval of the existing Tractor Supply Company. It was never anticipated that the approval of one development would sacrifice the rights of another. The subject area is composed of three separate legal lots of record within the Airport Business Park. If approved, the lot consolidation plat will come to consolidate this area into one lot. Daniel stated, touched on this a little bit earlier. This is a very unique product. The Lux Locker RV and Storage is different from other storage facilities. They're privately owned, privately maintained. It stalls a sense of pride and ownership. There's very low turnaround in site activity because of this. Only owners are allowed on the site and have access to the gated site. And with these being governed and privately owned, they are, they have covenants and HOA, or HOA, but unit association dues, which will help maintain the proposed landscape buffer that we're asking for in lieu of the hundred foot setback requirement that we don't feel that this project is required because of that lot line adjustment plat to approve the tractor supply business adjacent to the site. This will also increase security in the area. Twenty-four hour security monitoring will be established. We did have an early neighborhood application meeting with the other owners of the park as well as invited people within the community. The reception was good from existing owners of the park. They felt like Lux Locker could be a good neighbor to the area. This is the slide that I really want to go into. And as Tori stated, you know, this hundred foot setback that was established in two thousand and seventeen is a unique circumstance that was never anticipated with the original approvals for the park. Another thing is that the Airport Road right of way abuts the actual property line of the development. So as you can see in red, the setback would be that hundred foot setback is outlined in red. Within the twenty-five foot setback required of the business park under the original approvals, we are proposing a substantial amount of landscaping, which can be seen on the right corner of the screen. Furthermore, if you take an actual distance from the Airport Road roadway at a minimum of seventy-five feet, this is outlined in the greenish area, ninety feet in the middle of the site, and then a hundred and seventy feet to the furthest unit from the actual roadway of Airport Road. There's existing sidewalks within the area. We're more than willing to add some benches. I think we actually are providing a really nice streetscape and landscape buffer to the community. And the following slides reflect that. This is the streetscape and landscape buffer via Airport Road and Constellation Drive. This is kind of the front of the building, the mainstay of the building, if you will. You can see the amount of trees that are going to be put in here. You can see the setback requirement, I mean, the setback buffer that we're establishing. Here's a shot from the middle of the site. This will run all the way across Airport Road, all the way across the site, within that twenty-five foot setback. And this is from the furthest end of the site, closest to Tractor Supply. And just want to go into a little bit more detail. You know, this kind of illustrates it as well. You know, the variance is crucial to the development plan. We in order to develop this site, we were willing to work with staff and do amendments to the development plan. But if the variance is granted, is not granted, it's more likely that this will not go through. They will not reduce the units and they'll just move on to a different site. We already kind of went over streetscape. This is existing streetscape with an Airport Road. You could see there are some trees that run along Airport Road on both sides. We're going to continue that. Tractor Supply did do somewhat of a landscape buffer along their area. And then here again. I just want to kind of close with this statement from page six from staff. It says the property is zoned I one light industrial. Industrial storage areas within complete enclosed buildings are all land uses allowed under this zoning category. In addition, the properties with the Airport Road Overlay District are just allowed within the overlay district, however, the subject to the conditional additional setback requirements. The proposal meets all design standards except the Airport Road Overlay District, as shown in table two. Also, if you look at this product that we're providing, from a height standpoint, it's significantly lower than what's allowed in the light industrial district. Setbacks, open space, lot coverage. We're meeting those. The only thing that we're not meeting is a setback established well after the original approvals of the park. All the other areas within the park have developed in accordance with the original approvals. This lot has not had that opportunity for financial constraints, market constraints, whatever have you. They, it's one of the, actually one of the last lots in the park to be fully developed and finished. I wanted to kind of show you some existing product. This is an example of the wall that will go behind the landscape buffer. I know that, you know, the intent of the Airport Road Overlay setback in two thousand and seventeen was to provide, you know, setback from unsightly chain link fences, other things like that. You know, this is going to be a high end product. It's going to look nice. They want to be good neighbors to Santa Fe. They want to provide this product to Santa Fe. We've already actually had people reach out to reserve these units because of some of the strict HOA regulations within the city and county that do not allow homeowners to store RV or boats outside their homes. So this is a product that is needed. You know, and it will eliminate a lot of those RVs and boats being stored on public streets or private streets. This is another example here. And this is another example of a product that they did in Tucson, Arizona. I also have David Ferret from Lux Locker on the line if you have any specific questions to the Lux Locker philosophy or prior projects that they have completed across the country. And with that, I thank you for your time, and I stand for any questions. Thank you.
Any questions? If not, we'll open the matter up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that wants to comment on this matter?
You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing-
You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is John Hancock, 2669 Chelsea Lane. I am a real estate broker in Santa Fe, have been so for 40-plus years. I sold the land initially to the owner in 1980. There's several lots here that, and I have a little bit of concern. There's, there's lot consolidation, correct? You've got 3,900 Constellation and you have the Goonyburg lots. The overlay on 3,900 Constellation takes a third of that lot. I'm not an attorney. And as a real estate broker, I'm always concerned about vested interest. The overlay is a huge burden on any lot owner that loses a third of their lot. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Is there anyone on Zoom?
Thank you, Chair Clow. If anybody is on Zoom who would like to have public comment for this case, please raise your hand now. Okay, I do have one hand up on Zoom. Okay? Okay, it's David. Are you, you should be able to unmute yourself. If you'd like to get sworn in, please, before your two-minute public comment. Thank you.
You swear under the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Ferretti, 7324 Bree Court Manor Way, Austin, Texas, 78739. I didn't want to dive into the design. I think Nathan did a great job and Victoria did a great job there. I just wanted to open up if you had any specific questions about the operations or maintenance to kind of hit a few of the points that Nathan mentioned. We do have, we do sell these off individually. Lux Locker does maintain the ownership. They don't plan on selling off the ownership of the common area. We collect common area maintenance fees to keep that place clean, bright, landscape, the landscape up as well, too. There's the other uses that are unique to the site, as the RV dump and an RV wash as well, too, exclusively for the use of the owners only. He did mention in some of the super luxe units that there are restrooms. The, there's, the, the use is restricted by the CCNRs. No one is allowed to live in a unit. No one is allowed to operate a business out of here. Strictly prohibited. Those restrooms are for people, when they put their store, they store their RV, they want to use the private restroom, they can do that. But like I said, there's, it's highly the security is tight on this, only access control with cards or pass codes. And like I said, if there's any questions specifically to operations, I'm here to help.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to comment? Anyone else on Zoom?
Chair Clow, I do not see any other hands on Zoom.
We'll close the public comment section. I have a couple of questions of staff. It's been represented that on the master plan approval or the preliminary final development plan approval or the preliminary final subdivision plan approval that there was a 25-foot setback was noted on those. Do we have the documents that show that?
Chair Clow, members of the commission, we do have the initial master plan and the appendix of their application materials, Exhibit D, as well as the subdivision and development plan approval, as well as the lot line adjustment. Would you like me to show you?
Yes. I mean, in particular, would like, does it show a 25-foot setback?
Yes, Chair Clow, I'll start with the master plan, which is the original document. Is it not coming up? Can we? Reason why it's plugged in? Try again. Okay. Let me do this. Yeah, okay. See, it's hard to see. We can do full screen. That'd be great. How do we do that? So it's hard to read a little bit, but you can see here in the upper right-hand corner, the master plan did have setback established as part of that master plan. And then do you want me to move on or can you see that? Let's see. Zoom in a little bit. But I think one thing that we should have clarified in my presentation is that approval of a master plan and approval of a development plan does not approve a new development plan. They're, they're still subject to city standards, particularly when we have the notes that we've seen already that make it absolutely clear that any future development is subject to current Chapter 14 code. But it is understandable that the applicants would be under the impression that they had these, these rights. So this is the this is the subdivision. Where are we going? So this is the, yeah, 2006 subdivision and development plan and the appendix. This was approved by the county and the city jointly. And then you can see this is the lot in question here, the subject lot. This does not show a setback on the is it, there's no, it's okay. See, I don't know where it is in here. I've seen. You want to point it out? I'll zoom out. It's okay. It's hard to see for me, too, and I
Victoria?
So yeah, this, this development plan is recorded with the master plan. This is the second page. Let's see, there are some, let's see if we can find the notes. Yes. That's okay. Keep going. I know I saw it somewhere. Let's see, building setbacks. So we have rears five. I know I saw it. Why I can't find it now. If you can zoom out.
But hold on a minute because it says building setbacks. It's as required by
But it's not. So it's somewhere else on this.
It says building setbacks.
It specifically shows a 25-foot setback on
I want to read this one or, or as required by uniform building home. Okay.
Okay, so Daniel, if you can scroll a little bit so I can find that, just if you can zoom out. Okay. Let me see.
I didn't pack here. It would be this right here. This is the subject lot. Can you, is it on that section?
You know, it's, it's not. I should have had them highlighted. They're all on there.
That's okay. Here, how about that 25-foot setback? So that would be the holdover from the master plan. But again, it's not reflective of current zoning standards. Does that suffice your question?
And the master plan, the master plan, so what we're looking at right now is the preliminary final development plan. Is that correct?
That's right.
So it's, so the 25-foot setbacks are on the master plan and the preliminary final development plan?
Yes.
And what about the preliminary final subdivision plat approval?
So that's what we're looking at? This final subdivision plat development plan. The legal lot of record, which is the most recently approved plat, is the lot line adjustment, which elsewhere in this, sorry, it's going to take me a second here. This one, I think, yeah. I believe also shows a setback. See, I think that would, the sewer easement and setback. Yeah. And so I think that's right there. So again, this is reflecting what's on the previous plats. It even references it here, but you know, that's probably the development plan. That's referenced there.
Yes. Commissioners?
Madam Chair. As I was reading this material over the weekend and then listening again today, what I, and I'm not a lawyer, but it struck me that this really comes down to a decision as to which, whether the 2017 action by the city supersedes and replaces earlier actions. And to me, that hasn't got to do with the quality of the development or the need for the space or any of the rest of it. And could you just, you address that single point? Your finding, I think, has been that 2017 does supersede preceding choices.
Commissioners, members of the commission, that is our finding and perhaps Assistant Attorney Fegali could expand on that, but because of the notes and the legal lot of record, as well as our interpretation of of how the code applies to new development, that is, that is our finding.
Chair Clow, Commissioners. Yes, the more recent plat would be what controls. And generally, every time that someone comes in for a new permit, they have to comply with whatever the rules currently are. So in this case, the rules are for a storage facility, specifically, the setbacks are 100 feet. For other kinds of uses, they are not 100 feet. So the idea that this is the only thing they could do with this lot and that they're being required to have 100-foot setback, it's only if it's a storage facility or a few of the other ones that are, there are a few more mentioned in the
Jason?
Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to just add a couple points for clarification, just to add on to what Ms. Fegali was just saying. So like, for example, if somebody comes in for a small addition to their existing home downtown, for example, and there's lots of, you know, tight you know, property lines, people have built, you know, closer than five feet, you know, historically. So if they demolish part of their their structure, then they're required to comply with the current setback standards. And that does cause confusion, but just, that's another example of how, you know, what Ms. Fegali just said is true. Also just wanted to point out for the record. You know, we, we are required to, you know, make the determination that we have based on, on code. But the right-of-way in front of this property is one of the largest ones on Airport Road. The only, the only larger ones are on the far ends of the Airport Road. It's at Cerio Stand at 599, which would be appropriate. So this, just for the record, the you know, if you do pass the variance, I would take that into consideration.
You're saying there's already a lot of space there?
Correct.
So there's already sort of a step back based on the public vote?
Yes, approximately 50 feet. And there's really nothing even close along Airport Road other than that. It's all like, you know, maybe another one that I just measures like maybe 30 feet. Everything else is pretty much right up against the road. And that, that's just, I'm not trying to influence anything. It's just a point of information.
Commissioner Lawrence?
You know, I do, I feel bad for the applicant if they say that they, they did not understand what they were agreeing to with the 2013 plat, but I do think really that governs. I mean, that pretty clearly says that they are complying with future city code for development plan agreement. I mean, I, I think that it's clear. I don't know that I see other justification to meet the criteria for a variance when I think there was good logic in determining for the Airport Road overlay that there should be setbacks for this type of use. I don't see what makes them different in that regard. Except for the fact that they've been working this property for a very long time, but nonetheless, they, they agreed to this in 2013. And I, I think that the ordinance should apply.
Go ahead.
Madam Chair, Commissioners. I think that even if the overlay ordinance did apply, the spirit and intent of that ordinance is to provide a buffer for unsightly development. I wouldn't consider this product an unsightly development. As stated, it's a very unique situation. If any other business were to come in here, it could be taller and closer to the property lines. And we are offsetting this by a significant amount of landscaping that will actually improve the Airport Road area. The, the existing streetscapes that are the renderings of the streetscapes that we provided illustrate that. And I think that if the intent of that overlay ordinance was to provide a better streetscape and a better entrance or view of Airport Road, this project achieves that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by Commissioners? Commissioner Pava?
No, thank you. When I look at this, I think the intent for the overlay was aesthetics as well as community benefits. I get that. But this is a unique parcel in that there's already, unless somebody's going to expand Airport Road to eight lanes in every direction, in both directions, there's already behind the sidewalk, an awful lot of, it's right-of-way. And then you can get into definitions. Well, yeah, it's from the right-of-way versus the actual roadway and all of that. And I, I take a less harsh view of granting the variance in that regard. Just a statement for the record.
Any other comments or questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve case 20236487 3900 Constellation Drive, the setback variance.
And I think that with that motion, we probably need some findings on that or some clarifications as to why, such as the prior master plan approval and the preliminary final development plan and the preliminary final subdivision plan approval as specifically stated, there's 25 feet right-of-way. And that the applicant relied on that, and it relied on that. And that also, I think aesthetically, the design is such that it buffers the storage unit from the neighborhood. And perhaps Mr. Pava could provide more?
Should we be doing this before we do a second? That, that makes sense, right?
If, if we did a second first, that would be more, more in keeping with the rules. But the variance approval criteria is in your packet. It's on, starts on page 11. with the rules, but the, the variance approval criteria is in your packet. It's on, starts on page eleven. Yes, does someone want to second?
Is there a second?
Well, I'll second it.
Well, now you can have discussion. Which should include, should include going through the criteria.
It would need to go through the criteria.
Yes. I'm wondering if we can't reference the applicant's response to the criteria as findings, or at least a partial basis on the findings. Since there's a lot of work there that, that could be referenced.
Yeah, if, if that is what the commission is agreeing with.
Findings.
Correct.
So that when we recommend approval to the governing body, they have some findings. You know. I go with the applicants.
Commissioner Pava, members of the governing body, this is not going to the governing body.
Yeah.
We are the final on this unless there's an appeal.
I'm sorry, this is, it's, it's late, the hour is late and, and, and maybe I do have some jet lag and this is only a variance. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado. I withdraw my comments in that regard.
In the findings, are there, I mean, in the variance criteria, does the applicant talk about, I don't remember if they did or didn't talk about the aesthetics?
Madam Chair. If you'd permit a comment.
Yes, go ahead.
We, I guess I'd, I'd want somebody from staff's feedback on this. But I think we, we could approve it and reference requiring the applicant to have a landscaping buffer above what Chapter fourteen would normally require, which is essentially what they're showing. Basically that we're holding them to their, their renderings. And that that was our reason for approval.
That could be part of the reason for approval. There are several more criteria, but if Commissioner Pava would like to, you know, say that you agree with the applicant's response and potentially add Commissioner Morondo's amendment if Commissioner Lucero and Commissioner Pava agree with that.
I, I would, I would cite that the applicant's response to the tests for variance as being findings. And I would concur and, and accept Commissioner Morondo's reference to the, the landscaping depicted on the the plan as sufficient to, to show that they meet the intent of the Airport overlay zone for as applies to aesthetics and community beautification.
Would that be a requirement that they have that landscaping?
I believe so.
I agree with that, yes.
I would also add the fencing. The buffer that the fencing provides from the the street, the streetscape as a, as a reason for the variance.
Yes, I agree with that.
I concur.
Anything else anyone wants to add? Not?
Well, I mean, there was a mention of benches.
Commissioner Lucero, members of the commission, that's already a condition of approval in the conditions of approval in the staff reports. You don't have to add it as well. If you don't want to.
Do you want to move forward with the vote?
Commissioner, Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Now we'll move to the to case twenty twenty three six four eight six, the development plan.
Thirty nine hundred Constellation Drive Development Plan.
Commissioners, I believe I've already presented my case for this one. Although after discussion with the applicants, they've offered to maybe postpone the approval or denial of this part of the case so that they could address the issues that I've laid out in the, in my report.
I think that'd be good. That would be helpful.
Madam Chair, commissioners, thank you. Yes, I think that we would be more than willing to work with staff. You know, thank you staff for bringing this forward as fast as they did. This was actually kind of really a fast review. We will work with staff and get it ready for a presentation and address all of their comments before it comes before you again for a development plan action. Thank you.
Okay, so this will be postponed until?
Yes, Chair Clow is going to say if you could specify a date, that would mean that we don't need to renotice or the
Right.
Wouldn't need to renotice.
June one.
How long? Do you have a suggestion?
Okay, June one. It's June one, correct? It's the next one?
So June first at six p.m. here?
Two thousand twenty three.
You, you need to vote on that.
Okay, so do we make a motion?
We need a motion on that. Second?
Second.
So who made the motion? Commissioner Smith? Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith? Commissioner Lucero?
Yes.
Commissioner Morondo?
Yes.
Commissioner Pava?
Yes.
The motion has been approved.
Thank you.
And there's no old business? Or I'm sorry, we're moving to matters from staff. Is there any matters from staff? Matters from the commission? If not, we'll adjourn.